Good evening and welcome to the June 17th meeting of the Roseland Governing Body. Adequate notice of meetings provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act at the date, time, and location of the meeting will include the annual meeting schedule, posted on the public bulletin board in municipal building and filed in the office of the Borough Clerk. For those attending tonight's meeting via Zoom, the agenda and any other relevant documents can be found on the Borough's website attached to the meeting notice posted in the News and Announcement section. During the meeting, announcements will be made prior to the two public comment periods. Anyone wishing to make a public comment via computer will be instructed to use the Raise Your Hand icon, and anyone wishing to make a public comment via telephone will be instructed to dial star nine at the appropriate time. For those in attendance in person or remotely, please provide your name and address when selected. If you are eligible for Daniel's Law, please just announce your name. Mr. Watkins, please call the roll.
Mayor Spango.
Present.
Mr. Barty.
Here.
Mr. Brant.
Here.
Mrs. Parati.
Here.
Mr. Schroeder.
Here.
Mrs. Tully.
Here.
Mr. Trillo.
Please rise to the flag salute.
By allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda, we have our first round of public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us via Zoom, use the Raise Your Hand icon, and if you're with us telephonically, press star nine.
Hi, my name is Mark McElwich, 29 Third Avenue, with Cooper. We have about a dozen four to 10-year-old kids that play in the street and on the front lawns, and we have in excess a lot amount of cars coming down speeding that don't know it's a dead end. And they go down and they speed back up. You've got delivery trucks. It's a big issue and all the residents are really, really concerned that one of these kids is going to be hit by a car. You know, and I'm out there all the time. I got no kids out there, but I keep an eye on them, but you know, I stop all the drivers. I tell them, please drive slow. Truck drivers, I give them a nice bottle of water. I ask them, please drive slow, but it's really an issue.
Down third.
It's dangerous.
Question, is there a?
Dead end sign?
No, yeah, dead end.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, it says dead end. It's been there for years, but they come down and they get to the end and they go faster coming back because they're mad. And I get in the middle of the street, I stop them. I mean, I don't care, but we had all the residents sign this.
I will talk to the director and I will have, I'll see if they can have somebody down there for a couple of days during the day.
Yeah, because it's, the kid's gonna get, someone's gonna get hurt or killed. All right? Thank you very much. I appreciate whatever you can do.
Thank you for these kids. Thank you. I hear music.
My name is Charles Cristiano. I live at 57 Karen Drive, obviously in Roseland. A couple of questions. One is, I came to the meeting yesterday about the zoning. I didn't know about the, the large construction you have here on Harrison and just heard recently about the one on Passaic. And I have a, I have a question. Okay? And then I have a couple of comments. First question I have is, we have what, 800 units that are going to be built in, in this, okay? And 150 roughly is, is affordable housing.
It's usually about 20%, one for five, yeah.
Well, I guess here's my question. Why does it have to be 20%? Why do we have to have developers come in? So we over, we overbuild? Why not, has anybody ever considered just building the affordable housing? Use the town to float some debt? Get a developer to come in and eventually sell the properties and pay down the debt? So we're not burdened with 700 additional units that we didn't need? Because when I came here 28 years ago, this was a great town. It's starting to change. The traffic is ridiculous. On Pitt Karen, whenever there's a problem with Passaic, everybody comes down my street. And we have young kids there now. The family, the community is changing. Um, there's be 10 or 15 houses with older people. So that's one, one question I have. Because I know last night we came and we talked about phase three. And I was shocked to hear that there's two weeks left to make a decision. And the decision to, to approve or did, or reject was going to have a, create a tremendous problem for us with the courts. Because we have a commitment apparently to some sort of court decision. So one question I have is, how do we get ourselves in a situation where we have two weeks to make a decision when quarry, as I understand it, pulled out a year ago? A year ago. That's what they told us last night. So if somebody is, either dropped the ball, or maybe there were deals that are made? Because I feel like a gun is being put to the head of the, of the committee and, and the townspeople that we have to accept this now. So one, I'd like to find out what happened with that. That's, that's the second thing. And, and I guess I would say that I don't think there's enough communication that goes on around this stuff. You know, to let people know. Because I, I didn't, I wasn't aware of it, especially not this issue with the quarry. So if anybody here can explain that to me, and also have we considered maybe for, if we don't do this thing with the, with the Passaic Avenue, could we build the housing units ourselves? So living units, can the town do something? So we don't have to have 55 units that are going to offload on the Passaic Avenue? Like the other 600, or when you go to phase four, can you do something like that? I mean, you think outside the box. Because the one thing I do know is when you go to the developer and you do this 20% rule, it's great for the developer. He's making a fortune. Why don't, why do we have to line their pockets? Why don't we do it ourselves? Has that ever been considered? So those are my two questions. Why did we wait a year before anybody knew about this? Because it sounded like some of the people in the zoning committee were confused about this. The quarry being pulled out a year ago. And why haven't we considered, or have we considered the town building? The affordable housing units?
The, the quarry or the concrete plant came out of our round three plan. When we got our round four number, the end of October, beginning of November, the units that had to be made up from the quarry were going to be included in the round four plan.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that the reason they went to, is what we heard last night, and people who were here, just tell me if I'm wrong. They said the reason we had to put Passaic Avenue into phase three was because the quarry pulled out. But they pulled out a year ago, so it didn't give anybody, would have given you enough time to look at other options. Now, two weeks left to go, they're saying we have to approve it, have to approve it. I've seen things in business like this. People wait to play games and all of a sudden, you know, you got nothing. You have no, you have no decision-making capability. You have no planning times. You just have a gun to your head. And I feel like somebody either dropped the ball intentionally or in a, by error, one or the other.
Well, the, the, the round three makeup, or whether it was assigned to, whatever project it was assigned to, was going to be included in our round four plan. If we were able to make up that number, let's say the number came in half, then it would have been included in another project.
What would have been included?
Deal, what we, what we had to make up from round three.
So are you saying that the 11 units that, but did it have to be on, on Passaic Avenue at the lot that's being identified? Well, that's what I'm talking about.
We just had to get to a certain number. If that number was less, we would have been able to build, or they would have been proposing to build less.
Okay, but why couldn't we have looked, if we had the time? Could we not have looked at other options and explore? Because, I mean, this is going to be ridiculous with the traffic coming out of Harrison Avenue, coming down to Passaic. And then when you have all the detours, I got two little granddaughters who are right where they turn off of Pitt Karen to Morgantine to go down. And people, sometimes they go pretty fast because they're late because of the detour. So this seems to me like we're just adding to that problem. So again, my question is, why did it take a, a year for us to find out that we needed to replace the quarry with Harris, with Passaic Avenue?
The quarry isn't, the quarry is not replacing, being replaced by Passaic Avenue.
We were, we were told yesterday.
Whether, no matter where the units that we have to build come, we had to make up those units.
11 affordable units, right? Okay, so what I'm saying though is, if you knew a year ago that that wasn't an option, why couldn't you find other options? Why is this the only option and we only have two weeks to go?
This, that's not the only option. The, the, the agenda item tonight has been pulled from the agenda. That is not being voted on by the governing body tonight.
Okay, that's good.
That's being pulled. The, the governing body is going to speak with our attorney in executive session to discuss what transpired last night. I didn't want to announce that prior to the public comment, but since we brought up, that's not being voted on by the governing body tonight. It is being pulled.
Before you make a decision about that, is there going to be some way for the public to comment on it? If you, I don't want to.
Is open, so that's this period.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying though, if a deal was made in, in a week that we're going to go through with it.
You'll be, we will have to hold another meeting with public comment, yes.
Okay. How about the other question? Have you ever thought about as a town?
There are, there are people that have come to us with proposals to do affordable only units, which come out of, we would, asking us to subsidize it out of a trust account that we have. Unfortunately, the trust account only has about $300,000.
It has half a.
150 now. So we weren't able, they want us to pay for it from our trust account and subsidize them.
So we couldn't float debt for the, in the short term? And, and, and construct these units and then as the units are sold?
I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can derive a profit, can we?
No.
What?
You can make a profit.
I'm not saying you should make a profit. I'm just saying, let's leave that to developers. They're going to make a fortune. We, we know that. I'm not saying the town should make a profit. All I'm saying is the town could use the resources that hopefully it could borrow to build the affordable housing units. And you could, you price it at break even. You'll still get the revenue for the taxes. And then I don't have to worry about people renting these houses. Because that was the other thing they talked about. They were talking about rental units the other night.
No, I believe, if you're talking about Passaic Avenue, I believe those were for sale, for sale units.
And age restricted.
Age restricted.
And age.
That's incorrect.
All for sale, all age restricted. And how about?
No, it's not there either.
And how about this, the monstrosity over here? That has rentals?
That has rentals.
That's all right.
And it's not age restricted at all.
I concur with the presentation last night was a rental.
Okay, so.
That is how it was presented last.
Is there, is there a way to do that maybe with the fourth round, look into it? Because.
That's what we're going to, that's what we're going to discuss in.
But I'm talking about the town doing it, so we don't have to do anything other than the affordable housing. Because I think that's a big mistake not to consider that.
So, so yes, we're going to discuss it in executive session with our attorneys, other options besides the Passaic Avenue project after our meeting.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you.
Good evening. Richard Schloening, 15 Pitt Karen. I'm not going to repeat a lot of things that my neighbor Charlie just went through. Neighbor about. Uh, but I do, I do want to highlight a couple of things. So I've been in Roseland 40 years, last 30 in Pitt Karen. Seen a lot of changes to the town, traffic, everything else. Sure, all the other residents can attest to that. I'm, I'm happy to hear that 150 Passaic is, is, is kind of off decision-making at this point. Because I think it would have raised a lot of issues. Because you've got over 55 people pulling out across traffic during, anytime during the day. And let's face it, your driving skills starts to diminish as you get older. And I think it's just a recipe for disaster. You're coming out of Pitt Karen today during rush hour, you've got to wait for a gap in the traffic, rated by the traffic lights. Just few and far between. If you've got more cars now coming in from another exit on Passaic, it just creates more and more issues. I also want to point out that the plan presented last night by Collier and the engineer that was here, uh, this is the round four plan, makes no mention of the wall of the project at 150 Passaic, even though it was submitted on June 6th. So between June 6th and last night, 11 days, something happened. Where that engineer told us that the property on 150 Passaic was the only option for these 11 affordable units. That there was no other space in town that that could be built. So what happened in these 11 days where this plan is submitted, where the property is still zoned R1, no, not affordable housing, and the concrete plant is still zoned for affordable housing? Bit confusing. Is the plan accurate? It was submitted June 6th. It doesn't appear to be. We were also not allowed to ask any questions about the site plan, about traffic last night. It was off the table. So as residents, we have no clue of where the street's going to come out. About what impact paving, right, and building homes would have to flooding. There's a stream that runs back there. There's wetlands. What about the people who live downstream of all of that? We don't have any of this information. And yet this project was being fast-tracked and was going to be put into the updated, the round four submitted June 30th. Which to me would be that this thing is cement and stone, written in stone at that point. That you have to move forward with this plan. The last thing I'll bring up and another maybe proposal to what Charlie said is that why not approach the existing developers that are building on Harrison and Becker? And say to them, we need a few more affordable units in each of your complexes. We don't need 11 from each of them. We need two or three. And say to them, you know, listen, there's going to be a difference in what they can make on the sale of the rental of that unit compared to Fair Market Valley. You offset that with some sort of a tax abatement over a short-term period, and you make them whole. But you're not having to come up with a plan to build 55 units in two weeks on a busy Passaic Avenue. And I think there's just other alternatives that you could look at. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes.
Paul Vignus, 24 Morgantine Road. You've heard about the effect on Passaic Avenue for those of us that live in Pitt Karen. 40 years is a lot. I've lived over 50 years where I am. And I have a unique perspective because I live there and I have my office on.
Becker Farm?
Becker Farm Road. Uh, so I see them both. If you look at from the point of view of people who are going to use that area, Becker Farm is far preferable. There are lights, traffic lights at both ends, so that if you want to get into traffic, it's controlled. They built Becker Farm so that there are places for cars to wait while they try and get into traffic and to get out of traffic. None of that's available in Pitt Karen. You don't want kids playing back there anyway. The car racing that we hear may stop if you start construction and you have people there. That's a side benefit. I don't see the town as ever investing in housing. I, I just don't think it's a realistic alternative. But right now, people are looking at developing in Roseland and they think they've got the upper hand. And that they can call the percentages between low-income housing or affordable housing, excuse me, and regular housing. They've got to know that that's not totally true. I mean, when they put, I guess it's Roseland Green that empties on the Passaic Avenue. The idea was that if you allow traffic to make a left-hand turn, it would louse the traffic up. And therefore they made it illegal to make a left-hand turn. Sit across the street from there for a little while and see how that being illegal does anything. It does nothing. And, and I was delighted when the idea of putting a no left-hand turn sign came up. Uh, because I told my boss I was going to be a half hour late for work every day because I wouldn't be able to get into traffic. And this was his idea. You don't have to worry. They won't be able to louse up your traffic. The town has got to grow, I think unfortunately. My kids grew up here. I wish that they were close enough that my grandchildren could grow up here and then their children could grow up here. It's a wonderful town. But if you overdevelop it in the areas that are residential, you're going to lose the flavor of the town. Developing, I drive by Harrison Avenue. I see the construction going on there. I said, that's incredible. But that's on Harrison Avenue. It's not the same thing as putting it on Passaic Avenue. And I understand you're not putting or allowing a development on Passaic Avenue that you would on Harrison. But the traffic impact of those houses there, never mind the construction, are going to be incredible. You're going to have to park a policeman out there. And, and heaven knows we don't have a police department big enough to lose a police officer all day sitting on Passaic Avenue. I know that all of you live in town. I know that all of you are trying to do what you think is best for the town. And I'm asking you, this is a small crowd in comparison to what we had last night. Last night, there were no seats left for anybody. And I think once they were told that the plan wasn't going to be submitted this month, a lot of people sort of relaxed. I, I, I don't know that we can relax until you submit a plan. I, I think the pressure is on you, and if the pressure's on you, you're going to have to do something. And we've got to monitor what you do. We've got to let you know how we feel about it. And hopefully you'll listen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ari Haramis, 26 Morgantine Road. And like last night, I'm going to ride the judge's coattails. Kind of a similar sentiment. I've lived in Roseland since 1994. Uh, and forgive if I repeat some of the things I did last night. I'll try to be brief. But at the time, we were looking for somewhere to live to set down our roots, raise our kids. And Roseland was like a gem in the area. It's a great location. Uh, we liked the feel of the neighborhood. Our kids grew up in safe neighborhood. They, they still keep in touch with all their friends from Noecker. Um, it has a great feel. We've decided not to move after 30-plus years. We staying put. And the Little League, the activities, the school system, everything is great. But I was surprised to hear that they wanted to put 55 units across the street. Because we kind of were here for Roseland Green a few years ago and we heard everything with the traffic studies and the water and on and on. And like the judge says, you can't make a left turn out of there. And sometimes we cross the street to go walk or whatever, and there's cars coming. And if we put another 55 units, it, it kind of takes that feel of that nice suburban, uh, you know, single-family home neighborhood away. And selfishly, I don't want to live in a, in a city where there's high rises all over the place. I was shocked when the Harrison, we were running in the back of Roseland Green to cut through to Harrison. So we'd get, and all of a sudden the whole thing was cleared and there's this monstrous development. How many of these do we need? I mean, I, I realize there's affordable housing and I don't quite understand how the units are forced on everybody. There must be some, some way to have some say in this. But, um, if they have to develop, I would rather see single-family homes there. And like everybody else says, Becker Farm or Eisenhower where it's a little bit easier and not a strain on the neighborhood or about the children or the, the water or the traffic. And just kind of keep this area the, the special place that it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph Icabeli, I live on 5 Paradise Place. I'm also the homeowner association president of that small complex there. I'm probably going to state the obvious on what you folks already know about this, but I come from Fairfield. I lived there for 30 years. And I've fought this same fight in Fairfield a number of times for development in the area that I live. It's obviously not conforming use. It's R1 and you're going to have a complex that go in there that's not congruent with the rest of the neighborhood. But what really concerns me is the density factor. The dwell time to pull out of Paradise Place on Passaic Avenue is long. Even to pull off of Passaic Avenue into Paradise Place is long. So if you have 55 condos there or townhouses, you multiply that by two, that's 110 more cars. And if they have kids who drive, that's even more. And I will tell you that the majority of the people who reside in Paradise Place are seniors and I'm one of them. And it's hard for people to pull in and out of speeding traffic up and down Passaic Avenue. So I would urge you folks to consider this strongly and to keep the flavor of the neighborhood. And I know many people here have lived here much longer than I have, but it's just not congruent with what's there now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Two more things I forgot to say that I need us to say. So we, we talk about affordable housing, right? Uh, my son's 33. He grew up in Roseland. He can't afford to live here. Between him and his wife, they're making a buck 60, buck 70. They can't afford to move into town. So, you know, we're up, we're upset that developers come in and they leverage Mount Laurel and the towns and saying, you know, you got to put these units in. You got to use this to do it. And they're reaping us on the 80% of the other units that they're putting in luxury, uh, you know, accessories, granite countertops, stuff that you don't need, but they're looking to make a profit. So I know you guys don't have an answer for it, but you need to know the sentiment of us residents. My son would love to move back into town and raise a family. I would love to have him here. Not going to happen. At best, now with 20% down and with using that 30% of your income, monthly income to qualify for a loan, he can afford maybe 550, 570. When's the last time you saw a house like that in Roseland come up? Doesn't happen. You know, that's one thing. Last thing I want to say is that we have hundreds of new units coming into town with a lot of new tax revenue. What are you going to use that money for? You know, we have a bitter pill we have to swallow with a lot more traffic, high density, something like that. I'd love to see that money go to offset our property taxes and make it a benefit for us. So at least there is some upside.
Absolutely. 100%.
100%.
I know too many here, but my name's Brian Burchay. I'm at 149 Passaic. I'm like right, direct, directly across from where you want to do this project, um, or where they're proposing it. I'll be honest with you. Um, I'm in the town like 38 years. I've never been served with a petition about this project. I've never heard anybody call me about it. It's been up now twice as a proposal. I'm pissed. I don't understand this. I feel like, you know, we're dealing with behind-the-scenes people who are just rolling out these proposals. All right? I'm not that guy. I don't want to, I don't want to watch something get just blown through at the nth hour. All right? You had a whole year to deal with this. Okay, you're, you're shaking your head. I mean, that's what people are saying, that this was, this was known a year ago. So from a planning standpoint, we call this a planning board. I'm trying to understand how this could possibly be coming up now.
Not planning board, but.
At the nth hour, two weeks to go. I mean, it makes no sense to me logically. Okay? You know, I hear all the residents, I, I feel the same way. I don't understand this. Like, there's so many different areas that I know of in town that county-owned property, Roseland owns the property at Dock Rel. But this particular complex comes up on Passaic Avenue where there's no doubt there's a density and tech traffic problem there. Okay? To discuss that, to me, is like so baseless. It makes no logical sense to me to even consider it. Now, I understand you have the Mount Laurel and the Coa. And I'm a CPA by trade, so I've seen this before. But what I, what I don't understand is that we're, you know, we're coming in, we got two weeks to deal with this. This makes no sense. Is there, is there an attorney here?
Yeah.
Okay, so are you aware this, this was coming up?
Yeah.
Okay, why are we not being notified as residents?
Because it's not a decision of the residents. It's the decision of the council.
I'm an immediate, I'm, I'm immediately across the street from this property.
And no project is happening, any, just to what somebody said before.
If it's.
Any project that's in the plan is ultimately going to go to the planning board to be vetted. So there'll be traffic, there'll be, um, planners presented, there'll be wetlands analysis, everything that would normally happen in any project. And if there's an issue with the project, then obviously it won't move forward. It's just that these are the proposed projects that the council had considered to include in the plan.
That's not the way it was rolled out.
He's O'Brien. Been here since 1966. Grew up in town, raised my children in town. Agreed with most of this. Last night what they said was we were not allowed to hear about wetland.
Well, it's not at this point. It's not at this time when the. Well, it's not at this point, it's not at this time, when the projects actually come up for approval. That's when that would be considered.
Last night, they rejected the planning board.
The housing plan did, not the individual projects.
What they said was, is that these eleven units had to go through, and it needed to be on a plan by June thirtieth. And therefore, we had only two weeks left in order to get this through. And that none of these things that you're saying were allowed to be discussed.
Right, because this is not the time to discuss those things, when the project itself was gonna be approved or not. When those projects come up before this planning board, if the project moves forward, when that project comes to the planning board for approval, that's when those things would be considered, just like every other project.
I, I agree, I agree with, I agree with you, yeah.
Sent it to the state by June thirtieth.
Yes, under this, the law requires that if you do not, if the borough does not present a housing plan by June thirtieth, it loses its immunity, which means that any developer can sue and get whatever density that they want for these whatever projects.
Why is there no other property? Why is there, yeah, but why is there no other address that's being even bantered about? Why is it that proposed project, which was not approved in phase three, why is that being resurrected now at the nth hour? Makes no sense. There's county owns all over by the golf, the golf driving range. There's all kinds of land over there.
I believe it was Block, the, the, the lawyer last night?
No, he's a planner.
Of the planning, okay. What he was trying to say was, is that they, they needed those eleven units because we had to back out a year ago. Okay, and we needed to get those eleven units into a plan that needs to be submitted by the end of the month. If that is the case, one, and I think everybody's asked the question, and we haven't heard an answer yet, why did we wait for the two weeks prior prof- improper planning, as far as any kind of businesses run in the town should be run as a business? Um, and the other piece was that he said that, well, we just thought that because she could do eleven units on Passaic Avenue, it matched the numbers, so we put it in. Is that logical? Is that the way we do business? We're just going to haphazardly create a situation because those eleven units match what she had in her plan? I mean, it just, it's just doesn't make sense. And they said repeatedly, we as residents were not allowed to know as far as the wetlands, the traffic, all of those other engineering reports that need to happen in order for this plan to be approved. There was no time for that because we only had two weeks. And it was stressed over and over and over again.
I just had one clarified question, if I could. You said that the time to have those discussions after the plan is approved, something about.
The individual project, every project that's approved in connection with the COA agreement is still subject to approval by the planning board at a future date when the project actually comes up for approval. When this plan gets adopted, whatever the plan consists of and whatever projects are included, it's not like the developer the next day goes out and builds. They still have to go to the planning board, and they have to be vetted by the planning board and approved the way it would normally be.
Didn't citizens have an opportunity? I mean.
That would be at the planning board. You would come to a planning board hearing and say we have.
Like last night?
Yes, but what you were actually, what you were objecting to was the inclusion of that project in the housing plan itself. That's all I'm saying. There's a distinction in that, that what was up for consideration by the planning board at last night's meeting was the housing plan, which included certain projects. Those certain projects, whatever it is ultimately that the plan consists of, those projects are still subject to approval by the zoning, by the planning.
Sequencing of it, I would think you'd want to get the tea back from the citizens of the town before the project gets approved, so you kind of understand what everybody's concerned on.
I mean, once it's.
To do it after the plan has been approved, but before.
It's not my decision. This is the court mandated. We got a rule, the court says it has to be done by a certain date, so.
Citizens beforehand?
Now that doesn't.
Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 it's just the timing. It was the timing of it.
We haven't had a year, that's not.
Right, I'm not sure where the year's coming from. I, I don't know.
That we knew, we knew a year ago that, that we were short eleven units for round three.
I don't know that that's true, that a year ago.
Need to find a place for eleven units.
Not that it was a year, but the eleven units definitely accurate.
Yeah, but just, just, just to define what she's talking about. Because I was a little put off when I found out that we're gonna ramrod this thing in two weeks, okay? What was the date? What was the date when you knew?
When we knew.
That the eleven units were not gonna be built?
We, we got our number in Nov- I, I, end of October of twenty twenty-four. We accepted our number after our professionals reviewed it, I believe, February of twenty twenty-five.
When, when, when did the developer or whoever owns that land back out and say they don't want to, they don't want it developed? When did that happen?
That's weird, it's a year ago.
I don't remember the date.
When did they notify, when did they notify the town? That's what's, I mean, because if there's no look for an alternative property to develop, that's unfortunate, because somebody who's responsible for the COA is not doing their work.
And listen, I think there's a lot, I think there's a lot being said tonight, and this is good, right? Everyone's talking, this is what this is about, right? We're all supposed to hash it out, so this is good. Um, so we're gonna go back to executive after, and we're gonna discuss all the options. There are other options on the table that are, quite frankly, none of the options are palatable. Right? I don't think any of us are happy with whatever we end up agreeing to hundred and thirty. No one's gonna be happy, right? I'm, I'm not happy about the two hundred plus units that are going in on Becker Farm either.
One more question. When we submit the plan to the state, is that carved in stone, or can that plan be adjusted? So if you have a deadline to submit this plan, and it's part three and part four together, right, because we have to amend, amend the plan for eight, target rate? When we submit it, is it carved in stone, or can we submit saying we are working on a place to put those eleven units, but we haven't ironed that out yet?
No, you have to have a plan that has everything addressed, otherwise you'll have a builder suing the next day.
And then, once that plan goes to the state and is approved, that's it.
No, you can make, you could in theory make an amendment or make a request for an amendment.
To move those eleven units to someplace else.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's open, yes. You need to have a plan in place so that you're protected, so that July first, you don't lose your immunity. That plan can be modified at a future date if something comes up or a developer decides, you know what, I don't want to build here anymore, you know? Something happens, they discover something on their property that there's a wetlands that they didn't anticipate, and they can't actually do the number of units that they were promising, so you need to make a modification. So there are changes that can happen as you go through this process.
Which is what happened to the first round of those eleven units.
Exactly, because the developer backed out, exactly.
We need to find a reasonable plan to, to allow for those eleven units, and it, it could be just eleven units built by someone, the town, not a developer looking to make a fortune. Find a local contractor in town and give him a bid to build eleven units someplace. Someone who's not looking.
That's gonna be hard. I would love to find someone that's gonna do that, but that's gonna be a hard find.
Proposal was good. He had a couple of units that he.
To Harrison.
So we.
I don't think you can.
So listen.
It's a house that's reasonable for a hundred different reasons.
So listen, we hear you guys, this is great. I'm, I'm happy that everyone came out. This is what we do, if I could just get it out.
Why last night, what, wrong? The attorney for the developer on Passaic Avenue is here with her plans and wanted to explain her plans to the audience. We correctly said, that's not the time or the place to do that. Everybody's fear is that these approvals are going to happen, and then we're gonna get noticed about it. As opposed to getting noticed. Now, this mayor and council have a good reputation for listening to the people who live in town. That's, I assume, why you all get along. Which may be a blessing or a curse. But it's a very difficult thing for people who live down there. You know, I, I, I suspect that everybody loves it. Everybody talks about, can't you find somebody to do a development? Developers don't hang out on street corners.
Yeah.
Okay, they're trying to look to make.
Make money.
And that's the problem. That would just be a horrible decision, as someone who is involved with other towns' compilation.
Listen, we, we see it from, we see it from everybody. We see what's happening in East Sanover. We know what's happening in North Caldwell. We know what's happening in surrounding towns. So listen, we're taking all the information in, including the information you guys are coming to us now. We'll go to executive session, and we'll come up with a better plan, the best that we can to try and make everybody happy. The bottom line is, no one's happy about the COA stuff and the affordable housing to begin with. We're gonna make the best decision possible. My, me personally, when this came, we voted on it, and it went to the planning board, I was okay with it. My biggest selling point was the fact that they're age-restricted units on Passaic Avenue. We don't have any age-restricted units anywhere in town. And I, we hear from elderly people who want to stay in town. Like you were, who were saying that their kids can't live here. We were hearing about elderly people that want places that they can live. These are age-restricted units that we don't have anywhere else in town. A portion of them will be affordable, which is better than none of them, but at least it's age-restricted, which we thought was selling point. And then I thought the density on Becker Farm would just be over the top then. That was my reason. But we're gonna go to executive, we'll discuss everything, and we'll come back with something that's hopefully more palatable.
So proposed age restricted on Harrison when they decide to build, when that gets started. When, Joni, hold on.
Trying to get them to do that.
Wait, Joni, just correct me if I'm wrong. I know they keep saying, like, add them to what's already started. Well, I don't, and correct me if I'm wrong, we can't add more units to the plans that are all, the people who are ready to build now.
Are already under construction.
Right, the ones under construction, we can't.
Their unit.
I think, I don't, I.
It'd have to go into round four.
Right.
Aren't you saying that the developer considers?
July first.
It'll be July first.
Any, any.
Any developer, if we lose our.
We open up the floodgates.
That developer in the courts. Or if you can't, for an extent.
We tried for.
We asked and got denied, denied, turned down. We're denied.
We were denied.
Penalty if you don't.
You, there's, you're subject to litigation. They'll sue you. You lose all immunity.
What's. No, like, oh, you don't have to take any line to say. You didn't have, you, the right number.
Yeah, basically. There's no monetary penalty. It's just that you lose your immunity.
It's affordable and go to litigation, I'll be honest. That makes more sense. Nobody makes money, except lawyers.
Right.
Because the, the problem is, is that if you, if you lose your immunity, whatever you're saying the development should be, and what you're saying the density should be, if you lose your immunity, the developer gets to set that density. So a project that's fifty units could become a hundred and fifty units if there's a basis to be able to fit that number of units on a site. So it, it's a lot more exposure if you lose your immunity.
It's a gem.
So that's one of those things.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, we, we have an opportunity, and we have everything in our power as a council, and I want to speak for the council, to put in a report, meet our obligation, and avoid that draconian option. We can do it. I'm hearing this group, and last night, a few of my colleagues were at that entire meeting, are here, that this council can do better informing the public of what's happening. There is no judge, there is no court, there is nothing that prevents us as a council for doing that. And I also want to make it clear, it's been my position against this project for months, since we're opening it up to discussion and talking about what we're for or against. Nonetheless, I believe that we have an opportunity, and this council has heard, I'll speak for myself, has heard you, and we will come up with a plan that meets our obligation for June thirtieth. Thank you.
Let me echo. I'm also against it, but my question is now, there was a planning board meeting last night, and for the last couple of month, couple of months, there was no planning board. Why did, what, if the planning board knew of this ahead of time, and they had to cancel meetings, wasn't there a time where they could schedule an emergency meeting? I mean, if there were no meetings in what, March?
They're reporting in June sixth.
We can't, but I, I understand what you're saying with the planning board not meeting, but we can't speak for them. That would have to ask that. I'm sorry. Correct, correct. We spoke, we spoke to their attorney. I personally spoke to their attorney through our attorney this morning. Correct.
Both several, so many board members that were unaware.
Like planning board?
Planning board.
Well, they got their.
They, they sent them a blind side.
Oh, they got it Friday, they got the agenda.
That was the testimony last night of planning board members, that they were blindsided.
One question, the deadline isn't that, that it's a getting frenzy, I mean, developer can come in and get type launching.
That's, yeah, lose your immunity, yeah, it doesn't matter.
If that be challenged, where is that?
We wish, we wish that it could be.
Yeah, we live here, that doesn't make any sense.
Yes, we need to change.
That's the governor, that's Governor Murphy's bill that was adopted in March twenty twenty-four.
Get a new governor.
I don't know, I, I don't know if they can. We, it was historically, it was a former governor tried to get it out of the hands of the court, and I'm sure Joe Vignus knows this, but anyway, and get it back to the legislature, which we all would have loved to happen. Unfortunately, it failed. No, it doesn't make any logical sense whatsoever. Does.
One more. And then, you say that the wetlands doesn't matter. I don't believe that land can be built up, because I believe there's a high concentration of wetlands.
You're talking about one thirty-eight Passaic Avenue?
One thirty.
Yeah, so the the plan that was submitted, that they came up with, just included, the wetlands was taken out of it. So when they did their initial report five years ago, it was included in it, you know, and then when they came back, they were told what the wetlands are. So you can't build in wetlands, and there's usually a fifty-foot setback as well from that. So you have a buffer zone as well. So I think it was originally, I think it was originally eight point six acres, and it was reduced down to seven acres as a result of the wetlands on the property.
Um, that team, that game was tied in twenty twenty-two, using a map of two thousand and six. Have we taken this into consideration as the change in the property parcel now, because the needs and bounds do not need his original deed for that property that he proposed to affordable housing back in two thousand and fourteen? Do we know this? I mean, I, you can go on, uh, you can actually go on your own access to press to the Essex Register and see his own deed. I mean, you know, you have been presenting a project, a project from a proposed before coming forward to get approved for this new fourth round. Well, it's third round. Actually, your round was not approved yet, is that correct?
No, the third round was approved years ago.
On hearing in July that we're closing the third round?
No, the, these are credits that are open from the third round, but the third round was approved years ago.
Okay, so I.
Twenty nineteen.
You can all get back up, but I don't like, you know, there's things behind the scene that no one is, um, coming forward.
Just, I, I want to make a point about this wetlands problem, okay? Because I had spoken to the owner, and he told me that a large concentration of his acreage has been in wetlands years ago. Twenty years ago. Telling me that one, one acre out of eight is now wetlands. I'd have to see the study.
Absolutely. Any, any type of, any type of plan, so when, when a, when a plan or subdivision goes to the planning board, the board engineer reviews it, and he deems it for completeness. So they're gonna look at that.
That's before, that's before it gets to, you know what I mean?
Exactly, and that's, and that's, yeah, that's the flood zone.
Pictures and stuff.
The whole back of that property, there's water running through it and it spreads.
And there'll be a buffer for that. Absolutely, that's, those are, those are D P, you can't build on that. You can't touch it, you can't. I don't know the exact numbers, but you can't. So that's for the engineer to design, and the D, there's D P regulations that you follow. You can't build in wetlands, you can't grate.
In here to design. We have laid out plans for this, but that lot, because it was originally supposed to be three lots, but then when the original proposal was one thirty-eight to one fifty, I have two properties that are all located. His, his lot size is half what was originally proposed. You need a new proposal.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. Exactly, you need a new application and proposal.
Let us show the wetlands, the joint acreage that it can build, let's see.
There will be one.
It's old.
Very old.
Old.
No, so the we as a council saw a preliminary plan that showed the streets and that showed the access, and it's just a preliminary site plan with the actual units. There are duplex units, you know, that show the layout of everything. I made the comment that he was originally going to have two street access roads to access, one for the low income and then one for the regular development. Uh, we said no to that, because then that's gonna be two new intersections we're gonna create, and that's gonna cause even more conflict points and more traffic. So originally, the original plan had two separate driveways. So originally, the original plan had two separate driveways and it was the two developments. So I made the comment that we want one and then he's gonna probably lose a couple houses when he does so and then create an offshoot or away from that. But again, you can't touch, you can't grade any type of property inside a wetland. You know, you, in a flood zone or anything like that. In the state of New Jersey, you're not allowed to and this is because of D P laws and regulations.
We don't like make those decisions, right? We hear from.
It's possible.
It's not the proposal that's being considered in the plan, just so you know, because that original proposal was for like a hundred and thirty-six units. What's talked about here is fifty-five units. So the proposal that the councilman's speaking of is a plan that addresses the project that was in the housing plan, not the project that was submitted in the third round years ago. So according to the developer, they've taken into consideration based on a new wetland study, what the wetlands are and how much. What's described in the housing plan, the fifty-five units.
So, don't get on her back. Don't fuck about the attorney.
Right.
All right.
You know, wasn't the.
She tried.
This poor woman.
Go ahead, sorry. You're gonna tie it, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Your turn. Please.
Well, I came in a few minutes late, so I apologize if this word spoken about.
A beer.
Um, sorry.
Cynthia Salido, sixteen Williamsburg Drive. Um, I guess, what I'm confused about, like what you said, Mr. Schroeder, is like knowing more, understanding more, as younger parents of kids in the, the elementary school, we don't quite understand how all of this works. I know it's a very complex thing, but understanding which meeting we're supposed to come to, you know, obviously we all know we have tons of sports going on and things like that. So we don't know when we have to plan our time to come and speak as the younger parents. So if we could just have some more communication on that end, that would be absolutely great, maybe even explaining this is what a planning board meeting is, this is what X, Y, and Z is. Uh, maybe when you send out your Friday things, if we can have a little more explanation. Um, I, you know, I understand what the certain things, I do have a concern with the Harrison thing and I know saying adding eleven units, but I just wanna keep in mind that whatever we continue to add on to Harrison, Roosevelt, Lincoln, Williamsburg, Davenport, we are getting slammed. And I, my hugest concern is my kids can't even ride their bikes anymore in Williamsburg because now everybody wants to cut from Harrison to, to, to Eagle Rock through those streets. And those kids, our kids walk to Harrison, to the complex all the time. So that's my concern is like constantly building up in the center of our town. Is there any way, and like I said, I'm new to all this, that we can force the push out towards where more like Prudential and, and South Livingston Ave is that doesn't bring the building in the center, especially us, people who live in between Eagle Rock and Harrison.
That's, that's certainly something that's been discussed and will continue to be discussed, obviously, at this point. And just while you're getting up, remember guys, we, we're not necessarily the engineers and the lawyers and the developers, right? We're hearing from all these people when they present to us. Council is advising us a certain way, engineers are advising a certain way, and we're just trying to take all the information and figure out what's best. And that's why the planning board is on board, we're all in place too, because they all have to play their part and this is just part of it playing out. And the last minute rush thing, I, I understand, but everyone's against this timeline.
What the council can do though is make sure for anything the phase four comes out, there's, there's some sort of presentation well in advance. Not, you know, two weeks, not, you know, deals in the back. But let us have the information well in advance so we can make suggestions as well. I think the council owes the citizens that.
I agree. But I also think that we turned it over as timely as we could considering the timeline that we had with the, remember, the plan was approved June 6th. It's June what today?
Seventeen.
So we got this plan on June 6th. I'm sorry?
You go about that guy, okay, backing out a year ago.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be approved on June 6th. You should have had three months to think about it, talk about it, have a meeting, have another meeting, come up with an alternative.
But this plan was not in June 6th.
Yes, so.
Yes, they all are, and none of these projects are in zones that permit the projects that are proposed.
Which is why they're all.
Becker Farm is in zone for what's there. These projects all need to be, have ordinances adopted for new zoning.
No sense.
All right, so Ethan, Jesse Shepherd, um, eight West South Ward. Uh, I actually wanted to get up, uh, to basically have myself understand this process, which is what a lot of people are kind of talking about and saying they don't know how the process go, what to expect. So it is true, as, as counselor you just said, that none of these developers could actually build any of these proposed projects because they don't have the zoning, correct?
Yes.
And if they submit a plan and you, uh, come up with a housing plan that includes their plan, which you need to come up with a plan because you need that immunity, uh, because that immunity allows you as a council to make a plan as to where things are gonna go and what they're gonna contain, which is much more preferable, I think everybody would agree, to courts deciding where people already don't like that the courts have decided with requiring all this to begin with, because it did start out with a court decision. Um, but, so if, and, and there's been some confusion with what I've heard, that I myself have with what I've heard tonight. It, once though the governing body does approve this proposal, this plan, doesn't that in and of itself give these people the zoning that they need to build their projects?
No, the ordinances ultimately have to be adopted.
But still, that's, that's controlled by the governing body and the governing body gets to vote and pass those ordinances. And you would think if the governing body adopted this plan in order to get its immunity, that it's gonna follow through and adopt the ordinances or else it wouldn't make sense to adopt the plan to begin with. So, other than, because, because you've actually indicated with what you said here tonight, that these projects have to go back in front of the planning board, which they would never be in front of in the first place because they don't have the zoning. So they couldn't ever go in front of the planning board, because, because the planning board only handles applications after their zoning, there's.
Right, but the ordinances will be in place to permit those uses, so they don't need to get a use variance from the zoning board.
So.
Which is why they go to the planning board.
Right, but that's because the, the adoption of this plan by the governing body in essence gives them the zoning, although you have to go through the formality of passing the ordinance. But now they're in front of the planning board with their projects. At that point in time, could the planning board say, no, we don't want the project?
Yeah, I mean, there, it's still their right prerogative to review it if there's a rational basis. I mean, if it's an arbitrary capricious decision, they're subject to, you know, litigation.
Because.
But as long as there's a rational basis, I mean, if there's a justification, like if the wetlands presentation on a project is wrong and really the project can't accommodate the number of units that they're proposing, I mean, council can't control the planning board. It is an autonomous agency.
Planning board is separate autonomous, understand that, but like, for example, to kind of, I heard the things about this proposal on Passaic Avenue and that's been a proposal around for a long time and there's always been known that a large portion of that tract is wetland. But the way the developer is gonna deal with that is they're just gonna build on the parts of the, uh, tract, the land tract that are not wetlands. So if, if it's a, and I'm just taking numbers out of the air to illustrate the points, because a lot of people are asking questions about this, if there was a six acre tract and four of them are wetlands and they're building ten buildings with fifty-five units, they'll just build those ten units with fifty-five units on the two acres that aren't wetlands. But again, you know, I know that that, even if you zone it resident, none of that meets any of the, any of the ordinances that the borough already has in terms of setbacks and in terms of den, you know, density or in terms of anything like that. So, and those would all be rational basesies to say, we're not gonna approve your plan as far as the planning board. So what I don't understand is, like, you, you're giving them their zoning if you adopt their proposal within your plan and, you know, when they go to the, do they have to go to the planning board? And if so, could the planning board reject the project? You're telling me they still can do that?
If there's a rational basis, they can, it's an autonomous board. They can do what they want.
And wouldn't a rational basis be that you don't satisfy any of the criteria of, like, you, you're violating all our ordinances?
The ordinances are, will be changed to, to accommodate the projects.
Okay, so as part of the governing body adopting the ordinance, the ordinance is not just gonna be giving them the zoning, the ordinance is gonna be giving them in, in essence relief from all of the current requirements that that project would be subject to.
Yes, be able to accommodate the project, just like every other project that was done in the third round that's being built now. There were ordinances done in connection with the settlement and the COA, the third round, um, housing plan at that time to accommodate those projects.
Okay, so when they appeared back in front of the planning board, then in fact, they would, uh, the planning board really couldn't say you don't satisfy this, that, or the other thing, which all the other projects in the town have to satisfy because of this ordinance that the governing body just passed, basically amending just those rules for this particular project.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not much different than when you enter into a redevelopment zone or redevelopment agreement for a redevelopment project. Within that redevelopment plan that gets adopted with that project, you set forth the zoning. So the underlying zoning no, no longer applies. So everything that's in the plan is what governs how the project is gonna be built.
Right, but the point of all of this is that it's really on the governing body, that it's really the governing body that is gonna be deciding on an overall plan and on all the projects within that plan. Because then the governing body is gonna pass the ordinance that are essentially gonna give them all of the relief from all the rules and regulations that are preventing from what they're doing. So it's not really, can't really say that planning board is gonna have, are the people that are gonna decide whether or not these projects are gonna get built. Because once it gets there, all of the potential problems that a planning board would address or say, we're not gonna allow you to do it or you gotta change your proposal because of X, Y, and Z, you're already gonna have given them. So, um, what, I have another question though. What's the significance of the fact that the planning board voted no with respect to this proposal? What does that, what does that mean now? What does that mean?
Dead.
The whole plan? Or, so the whole plan, so a whole different plan has to go back in front of the planning board again before the, uh, or June 30th?
To submit the same plan and see if the planning board changes its mind.
But does the, does the planning board have to vote yes in order for this to go to the court?
Yes, the, the way that the rule, the law is structured, it's the planning board that adopts or rejects the plan. Once the plan is adopted, then the council takes action to, um, accept it, but it's, it's ultimately adopted by the planning board.
If it's not, who makes the final decision? Who makes the final decision in the final court?
It's the planning board that has, if the planning board rejects it.
For, it's the June 30th, the planning board?
The planning board has to approve it.
It can't go, it can't go to the, it can't be submitted to the state without the planning board approving.
No.
Got a scan over by the planning board as a council.
Hi, Susan Philczekar, fourteen Green Avenue. I wanna go at it a completely different angle and I have some questions. Um, this is gonna sound a little strange, but we just, in West Caldwell, they are building a new shop right. They went to the, uh, sewer connection. They could not hook up to the sewer connection because they said it wasn't big enough. They had to pay and go to Fairfield. How are we gonna hook up with all these buildings to that same one? Or are we gonna have to build our own sewer plant? Number one. Number two, the water in this town, as we all know, is a problem from Essex Fells. Now you're gonna add all these buildings with a water problem. What are we doing about it? And how are we hooking up to it when we don't have the facilities? Obviously, if they can't hook up one shop right to the sewer system, how are we gonna hook up all these buildings? Or are these buildings all gonna be built and they're gonna stand there empty like a bunch of skeletons until we can fix these problems, which could be years? How come there's no answers?
Which, which buildings are you referring to? You're referring to the entire, all the different projects or just specifically Passaic Avenue?
Even one.
Okay, so all the, all the projects, um, they're existing office buildings, so there's already infrastructure in place.
They're not as big as what you're planning to put in. There weren't as many bathrooms or water or.
So they're, what I'm saying though is that there's, they're gonna have to develop it, so I don't know how many, I don't know how many employees worked at those office buildings, but when they were fully occupied, there were, there was quite a bit of cars there and it was quite, quite a bit of traffic. So that's, that's an.
Be daily, that's not overnight either. That's not the same as a housing development.
It's actually probably worse, um, from a, you know, a eight hour, you know, impact, you know, when people are working during the day, prior to COVID, prior to people working from home. Um, so it's probably more of an impact and more of a surge during, you know, the daytime hours than people at night or whatever. Um, but again.
Agree with you there because most of the townspeople are then working and they're not home using their facilities. So it evens out.
Possibly, but. No, exactly, but just to say, well, as far as the infrastructure, the infrastructure's in place, obviously they're gonna have to make improvements to it. Any developer's gonna go in there, he's gonna have time to it, but it exists on Becker Farm Road, Passaic Avenue.
Buildings were even, before they even knocked down the other buildings, this should have been addressed. Because like I said, you built all these buildings on Becker Farm Road, on Harrison Avenue, now you want this one. But I don't hear any plans to improve our sewer or water system.
Each of these projects, each of these projects, it's the developers that would make the applications for sewer connection or water connection. They go to the respective facilities, whether it's the Caldwell Sewer Authority or they go to Essex Fells for the water. It's not the, the borough, if those facility, if those locations tell them there isn't sewer capacity, it's our understanding that Caldwell Sewer is saying they have capacity for various projects and additional development. But if they go to those places and they tell them that they can't build because there isn't capacity, the township has fulfilled its obligation by designating those projects. If they can't get built, they can't get built. That's not the fault of the borough. That's those facilities telling them there isn't capacity. Those developers will then have to pay to upsize the lines. Maybe they have to build another sewer plan or they have to do an, an extension, but that's their obligation. That's not the borough.
Rules to build that. We don't.
Then those projects just don't, aren't gonna ultimately happen, but the borough is still obligated. But then those projects are good to go. They have water and sewer already. If a project is built, that's one of the first things you have to do after you get your approvals, is get your, is your commitment from the D E P.
Because if you look, there's no, there's no digging for water and sewer in a lot of those places.
Set you that they have approvals from the authorities. They may not have put the lines in yet, but that's one of the first things you do after you get your approvals, because if you don't have water and sewer, you don't have a development.
Anybody can put up a development, that doesn't mean that it gets sold or rented.
Well, that's a whole different.
That's all part of this. And if we don't solve those problems, we've got bigger problems. And nobody's addressing it. Nobody.
Hi, good afternoon, council and mayor. Uh, my name is Michelle Saville. I'm at one thirty-two Passaic Avenue in Roseland. I've been a resident for thirty years. I kinda talked to Spiel last night in the planning. Um, a little, I'm a little, uh, I don't even know how to explain it, um, discerning about this, 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 uh, board here. Um, I, I want clarification. Do we have a certificate for the third round approval of twen, up to twenty twenty-five?
No, the third round isn't through twenty twenty-five. That's what's, this is the fourth.
The fourth round goes to thirty, twenty thirty-five.
Twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty-five.
Yeah, so.
As of right now, the third round, yes, we have a certificate.
We, we're certified.
Yes.
It's approved.
Yep. That was done.
Two thousand nineteen.
Right.
Yeah, when was that done?
I think it was nineteen, nineteen, twenty.
Two thousand nineteen?
It was, I think it was October of nineteen.
Okay, I, I just wanted to confirm that because it's a little confusing.
Yes.
Like, a lot of things are confusing, so I need clarification. Um, and I'm just, you know, I, I feel that we were being, um, we were being, um, not represented, that like, like you're saying, I agree with everyone, the first year, there was a year that passed. Okay, and, um, since twenty twenty-four, and you know, the delay results now in adverse consequences such as builders remedy lawsuits that can, is, is gonna happen. And now we're here rushing the development approvals. And, um, I basically wanna know, you know, why we were not informed. I, I, I feel like we were left in the dark. I mean, I've been to, I've been, I've been at every board meeting since two thousand and, uh, two, since twenty twenty-four. Okay, there's no quorum, it was canceled, there's nothing on the schedule. So why was this not addressed? Why?
Why didn't the planning board have a quorum?
No, not the quorum, it was canceled, there weren't enough applications on there. So if, if they knew since twenty twenty-four about this, it should, it, it should have been addressed. It should have been addressed. I, I, I'm kinda losing a little bit of the, um, the integrity of, of, of this community, knowing that you know, you waited a year and now we're under the gun and, and you're, you're proposing a property that you had all the, um, application. However, the property has changed since twenty twenty-two. Okay, so are you all looking, like, before you go and approve something, yes, it's in the proposal stage, but how could you still bring that property into the fourth, the fourth round? It, 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 it kinda
Proposal that's included in the plan is based on the property as it is today. It's not the proposal from twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Who has that document?
Yeah.
Who has it?
Yeah, where is the proposal?
I think, I, I don't remember if they included it in the plan or
No, it's not in there.
Yeah, it's in the back.
Page thirty-eight, I think.
Yeah, there's a description of what the plan is in, or the project in the plan.
I thought it was page thirty.
I thought it was in the plan.
Okay, and I also, I, I, I have something in here to show you about also the flooding.
Thirty.
You know, um, I don't know, maybe the board should take a look at this, how how it all goes down the stream and, and, and it, the, it's eroding. Nobody's, um, taking it in accountable. Um, we just keep building and not worrying about the water in Roseland. It's not fair to, not just because of me, I'm downstream, but I've seen floods and it, the bridge on Passaic Avenue, it colla- um, it's, it almost, you know, they wrote it out. It goes down to Passaic, you know, Pecaren that the water keeps going. Where, what are you doing about all this water?
Gets to that, second, third, and the fourth avenue where, yeah, there's Passaic Avenue.
There's, there's North Fullerton and there's
Down there and he's had the water in his basement.
It's flooded really bad and hard is eroded.
It's just that it's backing up from Passaic, you know, the Passaic River. Where, where is it all going?
Your next door. Remember when you were flooded out by work he was doing a couple of years ago? Your apartment, something. Remember you had something on the side?
Oh, yeah, the storm. It, it's actually, yeah, it's eroding underneath and I have a, a cave now under that my grandson can run and fall into four feet of water. I mean, uh, you know, it's just, it's just being ignored. This is a problem. Yes.
All that acreage back there, it's not organized.
Exactly.
Go act with it up, bring that water through. It only gets organized when it's going underneath the, again, for storm problems.
You have to talk to him.
So what you have is you have all this sprayed water now, that builder's gonna go in there, they're gonna raise the grade and all that water's gonna come streaming through there.
Yeah, I mean, Passaic, it, it, Pecaren, I mean, there, those homes over there. Yeah, actually, there's turbulence now.
Trust me.
Yeah, a lot more. I mean, you look at that, you look at that, Becker Farm Road is right, going right into that stream. Take a good look. Okay, so, yeah, I understand we want to build there, but you know, we need to take accountable for the, this water.
We don't want to build anywhere. We do not, just to be, like, we, we don't want to build anywhere. Let me be very clear about that. None of us, if nothing went up in Roseland until I died, I'd be totally fine with it. None of us want to build anything. We are obligated to.
Yeah.
They might not have any buildable limbs.
They don't have any buildable limbs. No, they don't want this in their, they don't want
No, it's not because they don't want it. Yeah.
We're sitting here, I'm listening to this now, Brad.
Hmm?
I'm not here in commentary about alternative sites.
Right.
It's not right.
Well, no, listen, you're gonna get another plan and then the public will hear it again and
Quite honestly, it's annoying.
No, it's not silence, but
I wanna hear, I wanna hear all person.
Can't talk.
You're not We, you're not gonna get alternative proposals in, in open public session until there's a plan adopted again. It's gonna go to the planning board, you'll have the chance to speak again publicly and it'll go to a council meeting for public comment as well.
There's exposure if we talk about it.
Right.
There's exposure. Until there's nothing to present. That's the only, that's the only reason.
Yeah, and it'll come before the planning board and it'll come before this council again, and you guys have to come out and be heard again.
I mean, when I, when I moved in this town thirty years ago, that stream was twenty-five feet. Okay, what is it now? Does anybody know how, how wide it is? Does anybody know? Since all these buildings went up, you got Rosen Green, you got Rosen Glen, you got the, the, um, the Arborist or Sunrise that it was at the time. You got Eagle Rock. All going in that stream. Becker Farm Road going all in that stream. Prudential. It's on that map. Look at the map. Okay, look how wide it's gone. Hello, are you trying to flood me? Is that what, my house is right there. Look at the map. Look in my house. Do you think that's fair? Would you want that to happen to you?
Listen, I got flooded the last time too. I live in the area where we get, I got, I got a sump that goes and if the generator goes, then my basement's flooded.
I've done my
I get it.
I've done my basement three times, so I know exactly what you're talking
In the same boat.
It's not Ordinance to protect people's properties. And they're not being used.
Yeah, maybe, maybe the property needs to have like an overflow tank that's like
Yeah, like, do
So every s- every single, every single development that comes in has to abide by stormwater regulations. So the DEP is involved with that. So so the way, the way it works for any developer, and this is even somebody's doing any type of impervious coverage on your own property, you have to put in a dry well. So for a major sub development like this, they're gonna have to put in basins. You're required to keep any type of stormwater runoff that you create from impervious coverage on your property. That's the law in New Jersey. Everybody has to abide by it. So the planning board will have their board engineer take a look at it and he'll be reviewing those, reviewing that. So it's not like somebody's gonna go out there and willy-nilly do what they want, they're gonna have to follow the rules. Now, they have to have a best management practices and they need to make sure that they, you know, maintain their basins and their dry wells and clean them out and everything. And most developers don't do that. They go in there, they build and they do it. So then the capacity of these things aren't as great as they are down the road. So when you're looking at twenty, thirty years down the road, it's, it's very rare that somebody actually keeps them accountable. But when it's built, it needs to be built according to a code.
Okay, just to know, I got that on GeoWeb, the, the New Jersey.
Yeah, I use it every day.
From that, so, yeah, so you're familiar with that. But, um, i- i- it's just also, I mean, I really would like to field investigation on that, that creek. I think there's people going in that are connected to, we don't even know. That are, their properties. I, I know off of, uh, I see up by, uh, Fernwood or whatever, there's, there's water drinkling in there.
So that's, so if you actually are aware of properties that are doing that, there is illegal discharge that you're not allowed to do and
Yes, the water being
So by all means, reach out, reach out to the borough, you can send me an email, our code enforcement office will go out there and take a look at it. If somebody's illegally discharging water into
No, I mean, there, there's uh, flow from other places that are, are going into that.
That's what I mean, yeah, exactly. So you can't
You should, you guys should be
Do that, you can't just take like, you know, your patio and then just put it into, directly into the stream.
It's actually, well, I see
Anything, it could be somebody's house, their gutters, whatever, you need to, you need to, you need to capture that water first, put it into a dry well and then the overflow, you know, based off of the design storm that the, you know, usually it's like a three inch storm over a one inch or one hour period. Um, water will go into there and then your overflow can go into the stream or whatever, but you have to maintain that water, any type of development on your property.
And, and all these trees falling down, how many times I gotta call the school because they're blocking the, uh, stream? It's just needs to be stabilized. This stream, North Full, I, what are your plans? Do we have any?
So that would be our borough engineer that would need to look into that. If you have specific locations that you want them to look into, absolutely, you could shoot me.
Stream.
You could send me anything. It's, so
It is, it's coming from upstream to
We don't, uh, maintain it.
Yes, that's where, yeah, exactly. Nothing, nothing, nothing.
Nothing has been improved.
It's just a shame that
Somebody complains, they turn around and say, well, you're the resident, so you can pay to widen your part of the No, uh-uh. That should be county or state. It should not be the individual owner.
That water is really picking up speed going on the Passaic Avenue down
Look at the bridge.
Go there, there's a storm, you'll see absolute
So that's, that's a county culvert right there. So, and all the culverts in the town are the county. No, but I'm just telling you that, who's responsible for that?
Who's the liaison? Get in touch with them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's always, yeah, go to this one, go to that one. Who, who's the boss here? Who's the boss?
I just had a, a question that will lead into something. So essentially, we're just forced to build until we have no more buildable land? That where we're at right now? Like, I just want to understand that, okay? Continue to buy, you know, the governor and the state and everything, we just have to keep building and there's nothing else we can do until we basically set run out of land. So my biggest concern with all of that, Noecker. Okay, that is, I mean, I voted for most of you because you said you'd protect Noecker. That was the biggest concern we had all these years ago. Uh, our special needs department were maxed. Like even with the referendum and the building, that just incorporated just the numbers that is being currently built. So now we have all these up, you wanted seventy-five units. Okay, I'll tell you truth, I spoke to superintendent the other day, he had no idea that that was even happening. So he had no idea about Passaic Ave. So how, like
So Passaic Ave would have been eight restricted, so Passaic Ave wouldn't have any impact on the school.
So I want to make sure because
If it gets moved somewhere else, it will be a bigger impact on the
But that's, that's the biggest concern. Like I've heard things about, um, about the Prudential campus that all the, where, what are we gonna do? Because the other thing is that for many years now, we've had the threat assessment every year we have on Noecker. And we have an excellent, like, low threat on our school because we're so bordered by the trees. And our kids are protected and that's why they, our kids can so freely go on the blacktop without certain extra levels of securities because of, we have such a low threat assessment because of the tree line. So I'm not quite sure where all the building would take place or how far it would reach back to Noecker, but that would be my concern. Cause now they've pulled extensions coming through the front. How much of we, would we lose if we have to build on Passaic? Like how much in the, like, you know?
While it was presented to us, it kind of reminded me of how Stonegate looks. Where you don't really see anything, everything's kinda in the back. I live one block away from Stonegate. Stonegate's never been a problem for me personally. Um, that's what it looked like in the plans when it was presented to me. Stonegate, like you don't really see the houses, it's all kind of back. I'm sure, I don't, I never, I never have to make a left out of there or anything, so I couldn't tell you, but I, you know, Stonegate's kind of well hit.
Townhouses. They're townhouses.
Yeah, they only go up to, they only go up to
No, so it's So so it was, it was gonna be twenty-two, it was gonna be like twenty-two duplex, duplex units. And then there was one apartment building for the low income, which was separated from the side. So it's, it's basically like twenty-two houses, you know, duplex units times two gives you the forty-four plus the eleven for the apartment. Now, that's, that's the way it was presented to us.
And the apartment building, I don't think it was four floors, I think it was
I think it was two, it was two and under, underground parking or garage below it.
Everything was two.
Yeah. Yeah.
Underground and flatlands.
No, not in, that's not in wetlands. It's not in wetlands. The wetlands are in the back, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Build is not wetlands, you're gonna create a huge water problem.
Again, every development has to do it, yeah. Well, but, yeah, exactly. But that's the way, that's the way engineers are designing things, so.
These building study, or you can put it into your
Plan.
Plan.
Obviously, once it goes in the plan, it's a done deal. Clarified with this gentleman.
Ethan Jesse Sheff, I just have another question. So just procedurally, uh, does the, is it the governing body that passes a resolution adopting the plan and then it goes to the planning board?
No.
Or does the plan that people are talking about go to the planning board and then they vote on it? And then if they approve it, it goes back to the governing body and then the governing body passes the resolution?
Though, the planning board votes at first. They have to either approve it or reject it. So like last night, the planning board rejected it. So there's nothing the council can do. The council does not have the power to override the planning board.
But then if the plan, like, the, the planning, the plan that got in front of the planning board, that doesn't have to be approved in any way by resolution or otherwise by the governing body?
No, it has to be approved by resolution by the planning board and then it's submitted to the state.
So like this plan that you're trying to come up with, does the governing body ever vote on that plan?
After the planning board adopts it, then the planning board affirms it in their resolution.
So I asked the same question. Does the governing body ever by resolution have to adopt the plan?
Well, it's not actually adopting the plan. It's basically like affirming the, the plan that's been adopted by the planning board. The adoption is by the planning board.
Okay, but so whatever goes in front of the planning board, the governing body doesn't have to approve that first.
No.
Or propose it. So it just goes in front of the planning board and then they vote on whatever's in front of them. And then if they approve it, the governing body still, it doesn't come back in front of the governing body for public hearings or anything like that. At that time, it goes to the state. And then it, it, you know, at some point in time, it comes back to the governing body to, to do an ordinance?
No.
So what's, what's the procedure with this?
The planning board either adopts it or rejects it. And then within forty-eight hours of the planning board taking action, it's assuming it's adopted, within forty-eight hours of the planning board adopting it, the plan has to be submitted to the state. Thereafter, the plan comes to, to the council for them to affirm that that action has been taken. And then shortly thereafter, I forget what the exact date is, like maybe by the end of the summer, September, the ordinances have to be in place or at least drafts of the ordinances have to be worked on and submitted to the state showing that those changes to the zoning have been done to, uh, accommodate the plan.
So how does what the planning board consider get to the planning board? How do they something goes on their agenda, that, that plan that goes on their agenda, where does it come from? Do they you know, doesn't it come from the governing body?
Yes, the governing body gave them a housing plan for them to consider.
And the governing body doesn't have to have a resolution on that?
No.
So then the public really never gets to see the plan that the governing body is proposing to the planning board?
Well, they see it at the planning board, that's the purpose of the meeting.
They don't see it here, they don't see it here with the people that it originates with.
No.
And that's not, like, that's not because we do it that way, but that's just
That's the way, if you look at every municipality and state, just the way it's working.
So let me see if I understand. So you can't overrule the planning board?
Nope.
So we have a planning board that's unelected by us, the citizens making the decisions and the people we elect can't manage them. So I guess the question I have is what control was there to make sure that they're acting, I'm not saying, I'm not questioning anybody's integrity, but what's the, typically in business, you, you would have, you know, checks and balances. It seems like unelected and no oversight. That's what I'm hearing. Is that a fair statement? Or am I wrong? If I'm wrong, please
Again, the only control is that it's the council that prepares the plan that gets presented to the planning board. But these are procedures set by the state. This isn't us and this isn't Roseland deciding this is the way to
So I guess what we could do then is maybe the council can decide since we have ability to influence whether you get elected or not, you can appoint the members of the, of the planning board. At least then that they have responsibility to answer to you. At least then that they have responsibility to answer to you and we hope.
They still don't have responsibility to answer to us, though. They still don't.
You could take them, you can reappoint.
You could choose, we could choose not to reappoint.
That was my attempted humor. Okay, but I think that you gotta look at that because it seems to me if somebody wanted to do some. Crazy things, uh, they could do it probably. And I'd like to think, you know, we put some controls in place.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately, you're right.
Still taking away recreation from our kids. Yeah, every single time we put in one of these plans. We're taking away recreational fields from our kids.
Is there a way to limit, not the the port of housing, but to limit how much you can build? So like to limit how high you can go, how many units you can put in. Any way to go back to the way the like my felt like the Williamsburg Airport is built and have homes with properties? Like, is there any way to find filters and go back to that? Where it's a community rather than feeling like you're stacking high and letting it fly like. No, I know, but still like. You're, like I said, go back to what's being built in Harrison, they're huge and it's just houses. It's just houses that were built in the sixties.
Well, on Passaic Avenue, we tried that years ago, Jesse, you were our counsel. When I was up here and we asked, why don't you just build five or six houses instead of humongous units? And he said, no, and. Came back to sewers. You know.
Like saying, whatever, it's six acres, you can build fifteen houses, like can you control that? Just explains to me how that works.
Yeah, but we don't have to prove the zoning.
I just wanted to understand like how much.
They have court launch if they get. We lose our immunity, correct? Yeah, it's it's a negotiation and it's based on what to develop the plans that are presented to us. This is this is the issue they. These they they want to make money. We don't, we don't want to give them money. None of us want to do any of this. None of us, eight years, none of us.
Lower, low and moderate. Some of them.
It's all three.
I think it's a third, a third, a third. I don't remember exactly off the breakdown. It's based on state law requires it to be a certain percentage of.
Low, moderate.
You're saying some of them have to be low, some have to be moderate income.
And some affordable. And some like very low.
Very, very low.
There's different income thresholds, state sets for for the third, the third, the third.
And and there's, there's not an opportunity to just do single family homes on that same property and accomplish these goals. Not there.
Wish there was. Wish they would do that.
Yeah, start looking at what is being built in this town and how it's being built. Fourth Avenue, for example, there was a house taken down there and a huge house is being put in its place. On Green Avenue, you have on the corner, they call it the boat.
The boat house.
After fifteen years, we have been looking at that thing being.
All green.
And it's no better than it was. Years ago, the woman that lived at the very first house on Green Avenue. Wanted to build a little house on that property for her mother-in-law and it was turned down by everybody. And now all of a sudden, we have this big monstrosity there and it is a monstrosity. It's only a couple feet from the brook, it's only a couple of feet from Passaic Avenue and a couple of feet from Green Avenue. There's gonna be an accident on that corner when those people move in because they walk down the street. You can't get in and out of their driveway, it's gonna be a mess, but I'm approved it, it's okay, you can build there. When I was building my house after the fire. The planning board put us through the mill. Who said you could build that big a house? Who said you could move up the garage? Who said you could do this, that and the other thing? And I said, look, look at your plans. It's my contractor, he lives next door. Oh, all of a sudden, everybody shut up. Uh-uh, it's who you know, who gets paid and who can make best deal. I'm sorry, but you'll never convince me of anything different. And now it's the same thing. We're looking at water problems, we're looking sewer problems, we're gonna look at. A paid fire department, more cops. And I hope we have a chief, not a director. More first aid is already half paid. Did any of you know that we are already paying?
We're not paying our first aid squad. We are, the borough is not paying the first aid squad. It's, that's not a hundred percent accurate. The there, they charge, there's the. You have the section of volunteers and then you have the paid service which is run by the volunteers. That paid service only charges your insurance company. They don't charge you, they they, I don't know, they don't come after you to balance bill if you're a Roseland resident. But that was the only way that we were able to get the response times down from forty-five minutes to seven minutes. And how, they have a twenty-four, yes, I was just gonna say that. Now it's twenty-four, seven. It's no more just Wednesday nights. We could not get volunteers for the day. We tried, this has taken four years. Director Mathias and I had worked on it for four years to get something like that in this town. And finally, finally, after four years, we now have twenty-four, seven emergency squad. We have three and if you saw the agenda, the borough was buying them another one. It's the first one the borough has bought in the it's since it was. Concept, conceived in nineteen eighty, since it was started in nineteen eighty. The borough is now paying because we see the need. For extra units and it's gonna take three years to get that ambulance. The borough has now agreed and we decided for the betterment of the community, we needed a new ambulance. So it's on the agenda tonight to buy a new ambulance.
Residents also know that we cover other towns for mutual aid.
Yes, we.
Ambulances do go out of town.
Yeah, like every other ambulance service, they all go. We all do mutual aid and they help us and we help them.
The squad is biggest West Essex, we shouldn't have to.
And we cover probably for West Essex because they can't get their volunteers either. The whole, and they're a hundred percent volunteers. They can't get them.
No, I thought it was one of the ambulance were paid for by one of the developers.
They brought one, ADP brought an ambulance years ago.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember that, to be honest. No. John, John is.
What, what kind of car?
It was a command vehicle, not an ambulance.
Well, some vehicle, they paid.
Right.
Well, my point is, by these developers that are coming in and they're building all over at Nate, which obviously we have a problem. You gotta, you gotta somehow accomplish the color requirement. But the the question I have is, what is their contribution to the infrastructure of the town? Very good points raised, very good, good points.
The, one of the developers, we, can I, can I speak to it?
You gotta watch.
I, I, I don't want to, one of the developers, we asked the question of, they came back and offered us a very nominal. Um, community benefit donation. We did our. One of the developers, we pressed for a. Community benefit donation. They came back very low and I don't want to speak to numbers without counsel. We went back at them and they came back in significantly. But we don't get to see that money until they're built, until they get the certificate of occupancy. But yes, we went along that line with a developer. About.
It's normal for these developers to be expected. In the home, in the home that I grew up in, down in Alvin. Okay, the builder was updated and they came in, they built all sidewalks, they had to clear and 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 build all the roads and everything. So the infrastructure was one hundred percent on the developer.
Correct.
All the gas hookups, everything.
And that'll be the same here.
Don't have any, we don't have any sidewalks.
Say it's the new projects over on Becker Farm, they're all being required to build sidewalks so that they connect to town. That's part of what the planning board is.
But that's absent the community benefit that that the borough will derive from now. They can, they, they can't, but the council, at least this governing body, committed to making sure Noecker. Has their fair share, so it would be un.
If there's a tax abatement in place, it's a regular tide.
It would be unfair of us to pass the tax along to the school board. So we want to make sure they get their fair share. It it wouldn't be very responsible of us to have no tax increase and then Noecker has to raise it ten percent. So, wh- whether where we can make Noecker whole, we, this council has committed to. We just can't legislate that, it's gotta be a council's decision each year. I shouldn't have said Noecker, I should have said the the schools, excuse me. I just think Noecker.
The diagram, the the project they presented was around the wet zone, it was in a buildable area according to. Yeah, I'm looking at.
One fifty out of it is one forty-four now off the table.
Yeah, that's not accurate.
I don't.
One forty-four. No, one forty-four, I believe is not, I believe it's only one thirty-eight. One thirty-eight, I believe it's only one thirty-eight.
It's, yes, last night, they said one thirty-eight is only, they they removed the other block from.
I think that was a type of.
Written proposal from the developer, one thirty-eight only.
They sent an updated plan, I want to say, was it last week or something like that? And then that's where they removed the uh, the address of one fifty.
Unfortunately, all, all the developers are unfortunately. Oh, oh, oh.
They're gonna come after the planning board and council. Supposedly years that had been, that we approved and now last night we can't. He has an owner that property was affecting.
They didn't have a plan tentatively approved. The one from five years ago was never approved. We went through litigation and we fought that for years. The fifty-five, the smaller one, so that was only. But it hasn't been approved, it was just part of the proposed draft plan that was put on the borough website on June sixth. Yeah, exactly, no, yes. Yeah, we can't, we can't submit that because the planning board denied it last night.
So the town's been in litigation with them previously?
For a long time.
He originally wanted to do a hundred and fifty units.
Hundred and eighty, hundred and eighty.
Hundred eighty units.
It cost us about six hundred thousand dollars, but we did prevail, obviously, but.
We're opening ourselves up to that again, if it doesn't go through, obviously. Agreed, well, he can still sue.
Anybody can sue.
Could expose us to.
We hear you, absolutely hear you.
Hey, evening, Aaron Zablow, thirty-seven Monroe Avenue, Roseland. Uh, nowhere near um this proposed project on Passaic. So building's coming, right? Um, if you don't like that, get out and. And don't vote Democrat in New Jersey, I don't know what to tell you, but they have an impossible job here. We gotta put units up somewhere. We got it. Um, but it needs to be done properly, just it does, and in in my estimation, not even living on that side of town. This proposal that was denied last night by the planning board, thank goodness, uh, would be a disaster. So a couple of questions. Um, have we, you said we have the certificate for our phase three, is that correct? Last night, was it Mr. Block? Is that his name?
Yes.
Yes.
He said that we're eleven units short, is that correct? So we have the certificate, but we're short.
Because the concrete plant.
SRM, is that the concrete? When did they pull out? How long ago did we know about this?
Was it October?
Last in a year?
That's nine months, I guess it puts us up, eight months.
And when did we know about our June thirtieth deadline? We applied for the extension in.
Well, we applied for the, the, I think that was last month.
The numbers, the numbers were released in Nov- end of October, beginning of November for round four. Our professionals reviewed them, we accepted our number, I believe, in February of twenty twenty-five.
And our number right now is one fifty-two and four, eleven from three and thirty-eight credits, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
What, what was the thirty-eight credits? You mean like bonus credits, you mean?
He said, he said we had credits.
Oh, okay, then maybe, maybe.
Eleven, one sixty-three, less thirty-eight. Alright.
Yeah, yes.
So last night, Mr. Block also said that there were several plans that they reviewed, yet there was one plan that was presented. To the planning board. Are there other plans to satisfy those units in thirteen? Tomorrow will be twelve days. Do we have another plan?
We're gonna come up with one.
Is there any other that have been discussed?
We have options, I don't know if we have plans, that's the best, options within the plans that are there.
Satisfy that number.
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
Maybe still hold to ask us what those are.
We're going into executive session after this to discuss our options.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I may, I can ask my question. Another way, do any of those alternative options? Include this proposal at the one thirty-eight block on Passaic Avenue?
Maybe.
You made a comment earlier, Mr. Sheva was up here and you said that you can take that same plan. Give it back to the planning board.
We could.
My question would be, why would we do something like that that was reviewed and already denied? It would be backing us more into the corner than we already are. I mean, we are back into a corner right now.
Nobody said we were gonna do it, we said we could.
Okay. Because like I said, the last minute scramble, I mean, we're, we're in, we're in a, in a corner and it feels like it's of our own making.
And we've been in the corner for a while with it too, then.
I don't know, I I don't want to say anything harsh because I'm friends with a lot of you, but it feels like we're here. Because of just some poor decisions that we made and this Manny Olivera sat here last night. He looked at Mr. Block and he looked at everybody out here and he said, why am I seeing this two weeks before the deadline?
Planning board didn't meet several times, right? They're an autonomous group, Mr. Zablow, that's not us. We're appointed, they have to meet.
When was it presented to them?
It was presented on June eleventh.
So it was presented to them twenty-six days before the deadline. Is that enough time?
Yeah.
Well.
Twenty-six days.
So I received, so I'm on the planning board, so I received the package, you know, in my mailbox. Uh, I guess, yeah, last week or the sixth or.
I'm making no accusations, but it feels, right, like I know a bunch of you guys are very smart people. This feels like it was rushed in. The decisions were calculated, that they were purposeful, just feels that way. And I'm not making any suggestions that they were, but. Um, it feels like.
You made the suggestion already. I think you, I think you kind of did make the suggestion and I'm gonna take umbrage to it, but go ahead.
They got it on the sixth, it's twenty-four days.
So I made this, I made this comment last.
Is twenty-four days enough? I, I, I don't know, I'm not, I like, to your point, I haven't spent my career in public service, is that a standard?
So I made, I made the comment, I made the comment last night that we got um four Becker Farm Road pulled out and there was supposed to be all age restricted. Development. And then they went and they changed the plan on us about two months ago. So when that occurred, we pivoted and we looked at different alternatives. One thirty-eight and one fifty being. One thirty-eight and one fifty being, you know, one of those alternatives. It's one thirty-eight, now one thirty-eight.
We've been working on this for more than
Yeah.
The six months or seven months. I mean, you could have came to all the.
So both, four Becker Farm Road is part of this.
Understand.
Part of the plan. And then they changed it on us two months ago. And that was the first question we asked. He went from.
Go back to them and tell them.
We asked the question, we said, why isn't this age restricted anymore? And they just said, no, you know, they, they want to do this now.
I understand, but I'm, listen, I'm not considering getting accused of doing stuff that, you know. Well, there's some allegations. There's some implications, let's say. You had a little more to say than that, than that. We've all said that.
In a position that shouldn't be in.
But you said a little more, right? That you thought someone was. Caging it. No, that's how you said it.
Possibility of brown. With, with municipalities, wait till the end hour and then jam stuff through.
Right. I think this, I think this governing board has.
Umbrage, but it does look a little like that.
It's fine, but you guys could look at what this council has done over the last however long. And I think that we've had the reputation for serving the, the city, the town very well.
That's why we're here. Cause you know what? It's unusual.
I live with, I appreciate what you guys do to this town.
I just wanted to ask, I want to understand. You said that who, who changed?
The four Becker Farm Road is the property right across the street from the fire station. It's the empty office building and they were going to do a bunch of units, all age restricted. It was gonna help us meet our numbers. And then they went and they changed the plan on us about two months ago. The developer, you know, I don't even know. Yeah. Just, we can't, there's no, so we didn't have an approved plan or whatever. It's just a preliminary, you know, concept plan that they gave to us and then today they came to us and we have it as part of this plan. It's in the plan that.
But it's no age.
But it's not age restricted anymore. Yeah.
Say no, you have to go back to the age restricted. Like I just want to understand what.
No, they have, they have. Projects, so then you have those units that you'd have to fill, like the units that that project might have.
We, we did go back to them and try to convince them to do age restricted. We were unsuccessful.
Age restricted is not part of our oral and the low income. We want the age, we as the town wanted age restriction. That is not part of our.
But it would have, it would have.
But it gives us credit, gives us credit to be age restricted.
And it, and it's less of a burden on the, you know, school system and.
No.
Yeah, no, I understand all that, but it's not part of this June thirtieth. It could be part of project four, uh, uh, whatever. Round four, but it's really not part of getting us out of this round three, June thirtieth. Is that correct?
Everything is June thirtieth. Round four is June thirtieth. We're just about to make up from the third.
We have some wiggle room because we have until the, uh, until twenty thirty.
Yes, correct. They don't have to build. Right. All we have to, we have to have a plan filed and have it approved.
I, I did hear that.
Good.
Yes.
When is the time we're getting next to adopt this, whatever you guys.
June thirtieth, assuming that we have a quorum. I was emailed this afternoon and asked if I would be there. Um, I'm sure all the other members of the planning board were as well. They email everybody individually because we can't have a group email. Same thing as yesterday.
Correct.
No, the planning board is opposite or rejects it. The council only, they endorse it after the planning board takes its action, but the action of the planning board has to happen.
Or June thirty?
No, we can, we can do it next. We don't have to be the thirty. We can be the next day or the day after. No, no, we're not late. It's June thirtieth is the planning board.
The planning board's action. The plan has to be filed by June thirtieth.
My request is this. In, in business, when we have problems, uh, whether major snafus or F-ups, whatever you want to call it, we would get the people involved. They would have to come in. They would have to give us an analysis of what happened, what went wrong. So it would be your group and the planning board, help us understand how all this confusion occurred, all this lack of communication. One, do an after-action review, we used to call it. And then understand what needs to change. Not only between two of you, your group and their group, but interaction with townspeople. I think that's a fair request, uh, as opposed to, well, they did, he, we did that. Both parties present, explaining to the townspeople. Because this is only for this problem. There could be other issues that come up in the future. I'm not gonna do it for housing. And if we have these, this kind of confusion. That's not.
I don't think we can rejoin, Kelly.
I don't know if both people feel the same way. We already have less people here by a substantial margin. Because they, because they felt that it was, it was cable. That's the reason. They made the point last night that the town council was meeting tonight. They can only vote on what the town council sends.
Right.
Okay. Well, the council is nice enough to let, before they do their business, to let us express our opinions.
So you don't think we're, we're, we're owed an after-action review or something?
That, that's, that's beside the point. What I'm saying is, we don't have the same amount of people we had last night. And it's the next night. If ever people were upset by it and called to action by it, it should be tight.
First of all, it was an online petition that was going around. Uh, when I signed it last night, it was three hundred and sixty-four signatures. That's not a small amount of people.
No, there was a ball thing tonight because of the wall for school. It was the last day of school and there was a big thing. And half those parents, I guarantee you, are, were over there because you could hear it. We're the, we're the thing. That's what we, we were hearing. So those parents had other priorities tonight and they were here last night and they felt that it was satisfying.
I don't, we don't need a thousand people to fill up through this. We, we're hearing you. I'm listening to you. We, we hear what you're saying. I, I get it and I, it's, it's not, listen, we had this, most of the stuff that we're discussing, we discussed already in executive session. We had, we, we hashed a lot of this out. And this is what we thought was best for the town. Now we're here for you guys. We'll go to executive session. We'll do our part, go back to the planning board and we have to go through this process again because that's how government's set up. And a lot of the rules are not rules that we make. Rules that we have to play by.
Well, it's not one fifty, it's only one thirty-eight.
Could we present that to the planning board? Yeah, we could. Doesn't sound like a logical choice at this point, but we could.
Well, none of the properties.
None of them zone.
We get advice from council too. It's not just at this point. We would have been between a rock and a hard place. If this plan went ahead of the board seven months ago, if we came up with it the day it was presented, we'd still be between a rock and a hard place. Yes.
And one thirty, that same book. Year or two down the line, not so much wetlands can build there. And you come up with another alternative in the next ten minutes.
And after the further counsel. And the planning board.
This is Ethan Jesse Shepherd again, anything else out for it? From what I've heard, from what I've heard today, I have the utmost confidence that the governing body is gonna be able to come up with a plan that is not gonna include that Passaic project and they're gonna be able to do so by June thirtieth. So that's what I've heard here tonight, reading between the lines.
Sorry, Priscilla, I couldn't get to you.
Priscilla Norvias, I live down on Godfrey Avenue. So realistically, I'm not affected by Pitt Karen. But, or I should say, Passaic Avenue, aside from driving on it. More cars, more people, more mess. But that's not where I'm gonna go with this right now. When you say eleven units, how many, what is that? Is that eleven apartments?
Yes.
Is it eleven buildings?
And correct, it's eleven, it's eleven dwellings, whether it would be an apartment or a townhouse. It's eleven dwellings. It's not eleven buildings. They're talking about eleven dwellings.
I believe it's one building in the plan, the eleven, right?
I think she's asking if it's specifically an apartment or it's a building or it's a house. It could be eleven houses and correct me if I'm wrong, or it could be eleven apartments. It's eleven dwellings.
It's just eleven. It's not like.
It's eleven dwellings.
No, I think it's, I think it's one or two buildings.
Are you asking specifically about the plan in Passaic? Are you asking generally?
But now, looking at the plan of Passaic, that gentleman purchased a piece of property with a house that he renovated. Now he's going to subdivide that property. House on each side. Now he wants to, now that paperwork's already done. How is he allowed to subdivide again?
That's where the old house is.
Right.
That's a different property.
No who's. It's, it's a different property. And they're keeping that house and I think, I believe they're putting.
Keep that house, put one on each side.
But now with that building, that's gonna go behind.
No, it's different property.
Over to the side.
You know, the old white house that's up there, that's it's back.
Okay. All right, now. How is putting that, that you're putting that there where there's wetlands? It's gonna affect the water table.
Of course. Probably, but I don't know exactly where.
Fit into this. They'll be notified, they'll be out there, they'll be looking at this.
Absolutely.
That's opposed to fifty-five, you know.
Right. No, no, I, I, I get that. But as far as the fifty-five and that's gonna be one structure out on to Passaic Avenue?
No, it's gonna be the fifty-five, the, the, the plan.
With the setback that all the other houses are.
It's basically, he was putting in like a new street with twenty-two buildings that are duplexes. And that was forty-four units and then eleven units and one other building, larger building off on the side.
So he purchased another piece of land, is what you're saying?
One thirty-eight Passaic Avenue.
Four of them are, or a couple of them are behind the property that's being developed.
So the road would basically curve behind it.
Okay.
To the left, behind the currently existing columns that are being built.
Now, will that in any way affect Noecker schools addition?
No, no, it's, it's.
How, like?
No, I'm just saying, is it that close?
It's not that close. No, he doesn't, he's not, the plan shows that he's not encroaching on the wetlands or the wetland buffer. And then on the other side of the wetlands, wetland buffer is where Noecker would be. So he's hundreds of feet away from it.
And again, that property would have been all age restricted, which would have zero impact on the school. I just want to keep pointing that out. Cause everyone seems to be overlooking that one, which I get. I get it.
Except for the traffic standpoint.
That'll have to go through too. The traffic study will have to be done.
Was the attorney yesterday said that she never did a traffic study.
They did one for the old development from five years ago.
That's what she stated last night.
Exactly. And that's why I asked the question last night when I said, have they done an updated traffic impact study? And our council, the, the planning board council said, we can't ask those questions right now. But I specifically asked that question last night because.
Just so everybody understands, years ago, when this originally was developed as an idea, there were twenty thousand cars a day going in front of my house. Now it's probably ten thousand. And it's because not everybody's going to their offices. Okay. That doesn't mean that when you go back to five days, which a lot of businesses are going, that you're not gonna have that traffic back up the state. So whatever traffic study that they're using that was done in whatever, two thousand seventeen, things totally about.
So I could speak to that because I'm a licensed engineer and a licensed professional traffic operations engineer as well. Um, you have, you have trip generation studies. The Institute of Transportation Engineers do updated manuals that give you factors for all that stuff. So any traffic study would have that in it. And they do updated numbers each year. You have to do a study where you're doing traffic volumes, traffic counts. And they, they add it based on the development, how much traffic is just gonna be generated from that development, based on the number of houses, the types of people, the ages of the people, all that is incorporated into it. And which is why I asked the question because I want to look at that, just like our board engineers are gonna be looking at that. We're gonna have two board engineers look at it. I do that for a living on a daily basis. So. I can't, but I can make the comments and then the county would be involved as well, so.
The traffic, the wetlands, the number of units that are gonna be put on that property don't seem to fit. I don't, I don't know how to do that on four acres. Makes no sense to me. Now somebody's saying, I think you said, John, you're talking about seven buildable acres. That's not my understanding of that property.
I, I mean, I don't know off the top of my head. I don't know, I don't have their final plan. I don't have.
Shows what the wetlands are, what the proposal is, where the units are gonna be located.
I didn't hear, but it's in the other, like an earlier one.
I was gonna say that it's not in the, it's not in the report, but we obviously saw the layout of it, right? Like, so I, I don't know why it's not in the report. But it kinda, John would know better than me. It kinda carves around all the wetlands. It does like the street, like you said, like an L. So that the wetlands don't seem to be in play from, again, what council and the developer are telling us. I mean, if the planning board, when it gets zoning, knows something different, then, you know, that's something that they would know better than us, I guess, but. Council and the developer have presented it as it doesn't impact on the wetlands.
You can't go, yeah.
VP came in and said, no, you can't do it. And we get time on it, then good for us.
Openly, doesn't the state of New Jersey come in and say, we've said that you've gotta have one hundred and fifty-two and I don't care where you find it. We've gotta find it somewhere.
That's the problem.
I've heard the state say with other towns, who have said, we have no place to build. You have ball fields. Nothing else will take your ball.
Yeah.
Those bands found a place to build.
We also are picking property that the town owns.
That, that's something I'm sure everybody wants to move.
Agreed.
County, county has plenty of space that they own in town that could be bought back.
Places right now, just affecting from wrong, the less of two evils. Cause like you said, it's either we build in a certain area with fifty-five plus, or we build somewhere else and it impacts the school. And impact, and I just want to say, like, I appreciate predicament that you're hitting and everyone's in because it's difficult and I know this is really hard, but like for a parent of a young child to start thinking like, I, I would, in a way, prefer to have fifty-five, like, that's the only option we have. For fifty-five plus housing, like I'm telling you, Noecker, even with the, uh, extension, we are at our maximum. We are, it's, that is, I don't even know where we, what would we would do, like, I, I run, I am the co-president of the Special Education Parent Administration Group for ours town. That's like a state mandated group. And there's, we're maxed. Twenty-five percent of our kids have special needs. We bring more kids into this town. Like I, you know, I hear everything and I appreciate everything's look, like the power system that's built, that's really affecting my family. But what's the lesser of two evils?
Graduating class yesterday from Noecker was seventy-five. Not sixth grade. What have we got in kindergarten already?
I think they have four kindergartens this year, right?
The first grade class has four. My, my youngest is in the first grade class and there's four, there's four, just like we had the graduating class last year was four as well.
Commenting.
Yeah.
Twenty-ish.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Five kids that were in each of the graduating sixth grade class. Our, our kindergarten that's now moved up to first grade had fifteen kids in four classes each. We have, we have eighty-seven children with IDPs. We have twenty-five approximately. We have twenty-five approximate children with five oh four health plans. Uh, twenty-five percent of our school has a special need. Um, each, like he said, moving up to the first grade's the numbers, that's gonna be another teacher. And we did not get, but we did not get the money that you think we got from the state.
They all in town.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't take.
You know, Roseanne ships out, Roseanne doesn't receive usually, Roseanne ships out.
But they used to.
Roseanne used to receive? Really?
We used to, yes.
I know that.
They don't do that anymore. No, they, they closed that. Yes, we did, we did. We were like one of the top schools to educate.
You're adding a classroom for it, so capacity, that's one additional classroom for each grade.
Pretty much.
Technically ten, it's gonna be a small classroom.
Should've never closed this.
But I'm just saying beyond that, the numbers beyond that, I'm, I'll take over.
Oh, but this. These are all the things we discussed behind the scenes.
Yeah.
This is it. This for six months.
The, the DOE that, that created the department for the parents to run this program, like.
But do you really want a thousand senior drivers pulling out?
Five thousand.
It's not a thousand.
But still, it's, it's back and forth all day, in and out, they're retired. They're, they're moving, they're going to stores, they're going, they're running hours, they're doing things, and they're doing it during the day.
And it's right next to the school. I, I, it's a safety issue.
Right, you say, yeah, exactly. There's not a lot of activity, yeah, so.
But is there a solution where you, you know, have someone, the security at that light, that comes in and out, I'm just trying to, like, say. Um, trust me, like, there's, there's not many places for the kids to go anymore, even with the extension.
Question, um, the project of Harrison and the two on Becker Farm, how many total units between the three?
Which, you're talking about six and eighty-five? I'll give you the exact number.
Like, started, you're saying?
Six Becker Farm is two hundred and ninety-nine. Eighty-four, eighty-five Livingston is two hundred and thirty-four. Two hundred and eleven.
Harrison is two eleven.
Yeah, about that.
Yep, our third, our third round number was like three hundred.
We're hundred and fifty-two.
Of that eight hundred and fifty, what's the breakdown? One, two bedrooms, what are we talking about?
Uh, majority one and two, but there are some three in there.
Affordables. But the three's are only the affordable unit.
Those are the bigger issues.
These are all of works, right? I'd assume that those are gonna have at least one, possibly two children.
Now, listen, hold on, we get studies from people that present, that we've had people come in that say, on average, this is what you're gonna get, and this is what we predict. And they, like, the equations and the algorithms these people have is beyond, no offense to you or me. I mean, I don't know what to do for a living, but beyond our pay grade. So they'll tell you, you know, this percentage usually goes to private school, not gonna impact the school. This percentage is gonna do whatever. So they gave us what we think are pretty solid numbers, which we have shared with the Board of Ed. Working with Mr. Leon, who's been awesome to work with, to come up with a plan where the school will not be harmed. This next round is obviously opening up another can of worms, and we thought that the fifty, yeah.
We're given data from an outside company that studied.
Yeah, and we did one, we shared it with Leon.
Yeah.
We, we have, do you have it or?
I'll have it in front of me.
Oh, God, I remember these ones. It was the.
We can, we can provide you with them, we don't have them here, but yeah. I don't wanna say the.
Wasn't as bad as we thought it was going to be, but again, you don't know that, right? Like, that's what they, that's what they think, but who knows, maybe someone was into a three bedroom house and has seven kids, I don't know.
A lot of bunk beds.
You know, my boys share a room. I don't know, just saying.
I just had a question, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking about the Fernwood property. Um, I read recently that, that they're considering doing development there. And I guess, when I think about the Ronald and the Fullerton Brook. That, that should really be factored in, even though it's, it's disconnected from this whole round four proposal. Um, I would just like you, the council, to take that forward into consideration as well, that, um, that also feeds right into. And, um, it's easy to just say, well, that's a separate thing, happen off in left field and, and block it out, but I think it needs to be considered as well.
Understood, thank you.
Sure.
Any other member of the public wish to be heard? Okay.
Put the screen up or?
No, it's an audio.
Sidewalks and generator in these paper areas that they're building. Where I live on Green Avenue, there is absolutely no way for anybody in our neighborhood to get to the center of town without a car. When I first moved there, we used to walk to the center of town. Now we can't. Number one, you've got across to State Avenue, we have two different places, cause we have no sidewalks on our side. And number two, and more importantly, we have been told that during the day, when school is in session, we are not allowed to walk up the path, behind the school, to get to the top of the railroad property, to get to the sidewalk, to go to the center. Because it's a danger to have people we don't know out the back.
David, how come I can't unmute myself?
You're talking about putting in more people in another area on that side.
I don't know.
Who can go nowhere without a car. I'm just wondering, I mean, Mr. Mayor, how do you think you're gonna get out of your driveway?
I live on Passaic, so I'm, I'm not, I'm, I feel everyone's pain here. I'm not as close as, as you are, Brian, but I'm on Passaic also, so this adversely affects me as well.
I, I think she's raising a good point, I mean, there's no regress, like, from Passaic.
I can't chat either.
And this is a safe problem for the ambulances and fire. I've often thought, you know.
For some reason, it's being weird tonight, I don't know.
And you can't get an ambulance or, or a fire engine down, and now you're gonna add another, you know, group of cars. I think there's already a major problem.
He's, I, I can't figure out why I'm not muted. So, this is insane, do you wanna speak?
My understanding was the town. You know, that is something that could be developed for a road.
Excuse me a minute, that railroad still goes and the steel factory.
I think you're talking.
I'm sorry.
Still goes as far as two eighty.
Yep.
I think you're talking about.
Right, but, right behind my house, I, I hear it every.
We're talking about the side closest to Harris, correct?
Well, I don't know how far, how far you own, but certainly behind Noecker.
Yes.
Yes.
The theoretically, if there was a road, for example, put through, directly from the first aid squad, right down the side of Noecker. You took out that mound of, you know, asphalt, that everybody used the cop shoes, I guess, for cut-throughs. That could be made into a throughway to, to alleviate some of the traffic on Passaic, going towards, uh, the credential building. But I've never heard anybody talk about it, and the same thing going over towards Harrison. That same, that could be, that could be a T, that would connect Harrison, Eagle Rock, and, uh. Theoretically, you own the Fernwood property too, so that all could be so that you could have a pass through to alleviate the traffic on Passaic.
Like another Lincoln.
Not a Lincoln, a road.
It would become a.
About a residential area, about a pass.
I don't know what this is still.
I do.
Ryan?
Ryan?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is that the person for public comment on Zoom?
Yes.
I don't know. Whomever's on Zoom for public comment, please just give your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Elizabeth Phillips, twenty-nine Lincoln Street. I actually have two topics. I do wanna follow on the subject that's been, has been discussed all evening. Um, just clarify, because there's been a lot of things said that haven't matched between last night and tonight. So, in this final group, not group three, was originally to be the, uh, age restricted. I believe it was supposed to be an assisted living of four Becker. That was not in three, that's in four, and they backed out.
No, that's the sixty-five Livingston, I'm sorry, it's very loud, sixty-five Livingston was in three as the assisted living, not four Becker.
Okay, so is sixty-five Livingston, who, who's the one that changed what they wanna do?
That was four Becker farm.
Four Becker.
Four Becker.
So sixty-five will be an assisted living?
The plant.
That's already been pre-approved, that was in the third round.
That's what I thought. Okay, so, so there is age restricted in that sense that sixty-five is an assisted living is age restricted.
It's different than age restricted, I mean.
Well, uh, okay, but it's not gonna generate children going to school. Okay, so that's where I got a little confused, because I thought it was sixty-five, and then I heard something about four. So then, in group four, four Becker had orig- had originally given you a proposal for age restricted. And.
Correct.
And has withdrawn that.
Correct.
Okay, and they want just to be full market slash with their percentage of.
Afforded.
Okay, and following on Mr. Cristiano's comment that I hadn't thought about last night, was an excellent suggestion. Has the council, because the council, if I'm understanding the process, comes up with their recommendation to the planning board. This is the plan we would like you to consider, you bless it, it goes to the state, then everything else follows, follows form. His suggestion was, why hasn't the town considered being the property owner? So I don't know how many of you people are aware of a Hundred Hillwood Terrace in Verona, anybody recognize that address?
What was the address?
A Hundred Hillwood Terrace in Verona, it's across from the Verona High School. It is income restricted. Senior living, in other words, you have this, all of the units. All of the, and it is the Verona senior, it's the town, this was set up in the, I wanna say the sixties or seventies. Where it is all either, you know, seniors, you also could be a disabled senior, you could be whatever. But in, the entire building is income restricted. And a huge, a, a huge asset to the town and the community, and the people that it serves. And that I thought was what, where Mr. Cristiano was going, and I went, what, what a concept. There's eleven units that you're trying to find a home for. I don't know which particular parts of the, um, Roseland has vacant or has the option to accommodate that, and I also do not know, do any of the group homes that service our disabled population meet for credit under this program?
Yeah, they're in there.
Yeah, we have one on, what's, is it Green?
I thought, I actually think there's one up on, uh, Laurel.
Yes.
Because right now, currently up for sale are properties in the center of town. Correct?
Someone was sold already. Correct.
Okay, so, the, I, I don't have an answer to my question. Are any of the, um, disabled group homes, do they meet for the COA?
Yes.
Yes, for prior rounds.
What about this round? Or, I'll rephrase that, if eleven was in the prior round, could that, because Mr. Burchay raised that same comment. There are properties owned by the town, where if you put, you know, if you drive across Laurel, there's several of them. I used to do home care visits in them, that you would never even know they existed. And they service a huge need to disabled people. That's, has that ever been considered by the town? Instead of having to deal with the eleven, and now an additional forty-four to make fifty-five, so the developer gets the profit? That's what Mr. Cristiano was addressing, and I, and, you know, I'm giving you two examples of other ways to meet eleven units. It's not that you have to find a place for fifty-five, you have to find eleven space for eleven units. So that, Mr. Burchay raises the issue, if the town owns properties that can have a home on it. So my question, I haven't heard the answer. Either any of these options been, been discussed? Because it appears the options are not able to be brought under transparency to the public, which I don't understand, but I guess that's how it works.
Um, there was, I said earlier, there was two, uh, proposals to, for, to build a, uh, I don't wanna use the word, uh, um, assisted homes for special needs, but they wanted the town to use our trust, which only has a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it, to purchase the property.
Oh my God, I cannot think of the, um, I can't think of the comp, I cannot think of the company off the top of my head.
And the Ark, are you thinking of the Ark?
No, I'm not thinking of the Ark, I'm thinking of in Livingston, oh my goodness, I'd have to email you, I can't think of the name of the.
Life Town?
Nope.
Desby House?
And they're over on, they're over on the backside in Livingston, I just can't think of the name of them. But there's, that's what I'm asking, have, have we really explored that? Because I do believe Mr. Burchay is correct, there's, there appears to be properties in this town where there are, you know. That might be a, a more palatable solution to the, to the need that we have to address. And I don't know how you would, in seven days or whatever, figure out the kind of situation that's in Verona, which I kinda wonder why no one did it for any of the previous developments, or previous solutions to the COA, because it's a phenomenal situation they have there, it's kind of a hidden gem that most, that those of us know about don't like to share. So that's my comment on that, and then I just have one quick question, as a resident on Lincoln Street, has there been a decision on the speed tables?
Have we gotten the data back from?
Yes, we have our officer that installs the, um, the traffic, uh, um, unit, um, the, the counter. Uh, he was injured, um, and he couldn't do it, so as soon as the traffic study is performed for the after study, to get the speeds on Lincoln Street, um, a decision will be made.
Okay, and I've heard, and again, I've heard the comment a couple of times, and it irritates me. Yes, we understand as, as residents of the town, that you, you make the decisions. We elected you to speak on our behalf and hopefully represent our, um, philosophies, or whatever you wanna call it. We're just asking to be engaged. And that's where I find a lack of transparency, Mr. Schroeder addressed it, it's been mentioned in many of the Lincoln Street comments, there, there needs to be more than just the rumor mill, then has to get on social media and spread the word. That, I can tell you in other towns, they put out there, we're, we're, we're looking for community input. We understand that we don't make the decision, but invite us to the table and ask us our concerns. I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
Understood.
Can that happen going forward with Lincoln Street and with this? In other words, how, are we, how do we find out when next you come? How do we find out when next you come forth with your recommendation to the planning board? How are we going to find out? Next Sol's, you know, the Roseland uh newsletter once a week? In other words.
You can go to the schedule, the planning board meeting. Like everybody else, I I got.
That wasn't my question. My question was, how do we know that you have come to your conclusion as to what your recommendation is to them?
Well, it'll be at the next planning board meeting. They're only going to meet because they're giving them a plan.
I don't need to be flippant. I don't need to be flippant, but finding meetings and agendas is a challenge on this website. Just putting it out there. I called the town to find this one.
It'll be noticed in the newsletter. It'll be on the website. I I mean, all public meetings are uh publicized forty eight hours notice. Uh, we we follow all the rules and regulations accorded with public meeting.
Again, I don't feel like that's encouraging or asking us to to be overly involved. And that's, I think, what most of the residents that are present at the meeting are trying to convey to you. Okay, thank you.
Published in a newspaper as well by, you know, law in New Jersey. So um although all publications are, you know, put out.
But the general.
Most of them are online. Schedule. Progress, progress, the progresses.
I'd love to hear suggestions of how to get it out more, if you have any of those.
Yeah.
Well, in the Roseland newsletter, it you never see anything saying we have an open meeting to hear public comments on 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 an option that we're we're considering.
Every time there's a. Something with spraying mosquitoes, I get a phone call.
All right.
There there's a problem with uh.
The next one you're talking about.
He always got it from, what's his name? Give him a sense of.
There's just someone talking in the crowd, man, that's all.
If 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 there's a way for them to do it, then we all get it. There's obviously a process in place.
You'd probably do a phone blast.
Can we leverage that? Right?
We've had them before in emergencies.
Again, that's only as good as the number of people that actually sign up for those different things. So like, when you have those, when you have those Nix alerts that go out, not everybody signs up for those, just like other people don't go to websites and stuffs. So. We can't, we can't.
Not your number two.
I got two.
All I'm saying is.
I didn't get it.
It's available.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
I hear you.
Let's be on that.
I think you have a point. I'll be honest with you. I'm looking at these weekly newsletters. And buried, you know, seventeen pages in is a discussion about this. That's not right here. That's not right. You gotta go find, I gotta go hunt.
So I hear you.
My point was, was that we were not notified and I'm directly across the street from this.
Right. Hmm.
I don't know what.
I get, so you you would be notified when it goes before the planning board because if you're within two hundred feet, you would definitely be notified then. I'm just saying, that's that's when you're notified.
Word, word.
Yeah.
You have, I'm going, you're saying seven years of lawsuits. I'm not being notified.
Yeah.
I'm an adjacent property to it. I don't understand it. It's no sense to me.
Notified on next door. The last application for two thousand and fifteen. I was not even, you look on that preliminary, my address is not even on there, but he notified two hundred feet.
I can't see how the legal, you know, responsibility is being accomplished by planning. Especially when there's going to be a zoning change. It's no sense.
I couldn't agree generally. Had a lot of white people. Why behind me?
Maybe even just. Did you know you can speak at council meetings? Did you know you can like, not everybody knows that? Name in its terms, just like.
Progress still.
Did you know?
A lot of people, a lot of people don't.
Yeah, well, you guys, right? All public notice on the progress. I'd say less than one percent of people know.
We're we're, I think, was it two or three publications?
Uh, there's no more Star Ledger.
Yeah.
Star Ledger, not all that.
And listen, it's an interesting question, maybe not for this conversation now, but at what point is it our job to make everybody responsible citizens? And at what point is it everyone's job to be responsible citizen? You're here, you found out, right? I I we see it at the Board of Admin meetings. So I go to, I go to the Board of Admin meeting, there's like two people half the time. Yeah, I'm like the Facebook thing you're saying? Nah, that's not a community blog. That's a certain group of people who have a blog going. That's not a, that's not, that's not, that doesn't represent the whole community, Brian. I think you know that. Yeah, that's, I'll get accused of that next. It's fine.
It always.
So what safe way do we have to get it out to everybody? I. Every Friday, yes. It is.
It is in.
It's in there.
It is in there. Ooh, it is in there.
You know, you have your T wall sign on that with your planning.
I get it.
The agenda is in there.
It makes no sense.
Well, maybe we could change the order of what comes out each week. Anything pertaining to the borough and the people should be in the beginning and then other town activities after.
Good point.
Mm hmm.
Because then you get people, like I posted something on Facebook and somebody wrote, oh, no, it's not. She doesn't know what she's talking about. It's not tonight. So people didn't come.
I don't trust any of my news on social media, just science. It's too real. Sometimes more than one.
Yes.
I make a suggestion.
Sure.
Why doesn't, why is it the meeting end? You guys go home, get rested and get ready for tomorrow.
We have a lot to do. It's a lot of work to do.
Well, we just didn't want.
You guys stop.
We didn't want to, we didn't want to shorten anyone who wanted to make comments, so.
Have to say, it only helps us to make a better decision.
Would be disrespectful.
I just, we can hear, we we hear what you have to say. It helps us, you're the voice, we're here for you. So it helps us make the the right decision for everyone, listening to everybody. So I'm appreciative of it.
There's a phone call.
Of course.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you can hear me?
Yes.
Oh, how you doing? Um, Michael Lapree, twenty four Lincoln Street. So I was listening, I actually wasn't going to say anything. I know it's late, everybody wants to go home. I just want to thank you very much for paving our street, came out beautiful. I hate to ruin it with any speed bumps uh as 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 you know. Um, I got a couple of questions real quick. Um, the counter that's on the end of the street, you said is for speed. Is it also for volume? And um and real quick. Is it for volume of cars also? Because uh I thought we were going to try to get a quote on on how many cars come down the street because there is a law of putting speed tables on a certain amount of cars going down the street, especially Lincoln. And let me just say, real quick, the residents that are sitting there, I feel for you, but you should drive down Lincoln Street when you have eighteen wheelers coming down. Now, speed bumps are not going to stop those cars, they're not going to slow them down. We're going to need railroad uh crossings because we're going to have a line of cars coming down and they're going to be slow anyway because the volume of cars that are going to be coming down is going to be enormous. So uh I'm really, I I on one hand, I'm afraid, God forbid, somebody gets hurt and I'm fighting these speed tables. But on the other hand, you put these speed tables in and people try to pass each other and somebody gets hurt, there's going to be a problem also. And I, we had these speed tables before and people tried to pass on them and people got like crazy on this street, yelling at each other. And it was just a wreck. So going back to my first question, is there going to be a counter on the volume of cars going down Lincoln Street? Thank you. That's one question.
Yes, so we we did a traffics traffic count um and speed study um for the middle of the street, um right at the crest of the hill on Lincoln Street before paving. And we were going to do one right afterward, but again, like uh the officer hurt himself. So as soon as he recovers, he'll be doing a study as well um for one week. We're going to compare the data from before and after.
You can't do one week, you just can't do one week.
It's, that's a standard traffic study, it's one week.
Well, you can't do it during the summer. You can't do it during the summer, you got to do it when it's busy. I mean, you just can't, I mean, you can't.
So again, when it comes to traffic studies like that, um, there's a bunch of manuals, chip generation manuals from the Institute of Transportation Engineers and various other organizations um that give um, you know, um factors based on the type of roadway classification and the time of year. Um, so they do an average based on, you know, the, you know, area of the country that you're in and then it boils down to the state that you're in and then the region of the state. And it goes to roadway classification ver versus like a conventional highway versus a rural road. And it gives you factors based off of time of year and everything. So a traffic engineer, so we're going to give those volumes to our borough engineer. He'll go out there and he'll do a study comparing them and it's going to compare apples to apples based off of before and after the roadway was paved. And, you know, the factor that was done, we tried to do it as close to when they started paving um and we, I wanted to get it, the other study to be done literally the week after, but unfortunately the officer hurt himself. Um, so as soon as he recovers, we're going to do the the second study and then uh the comparison will be done.
I hear you, but I and I respect you, but I don't think they're going to be accurate compared to uh during during the school years or and 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 we should wait until all these units are put up, you know, until the traffic starts, you know, those additional units is going to create.
We could always, we could always do an additional study after the fact as well. Um, the fact that, you know, the borough went and purchased this unit for five thousand dollars um per my recommendation back a couple of months ago. It's so that we could do these studies when a resident reaches out and he expresses a concern because it's no cost to us, you know? Um, whereas in the past, we would have to hire an engineering company to go out there and do a traffic study for us. And every time that they do a study, it's going to cost, you know, ten or fifteen thousand dollars. We have this available and we have this, you know, this tool at our fingertips to utilize all the time. So anytime any resident has any type of issues with speeding or volumes, you know, by all means, reach out to the Borough Council, reach out to myself, you send me an email and we can get a counter put out there in days, as long as it's not being utilized at another location. Once one study is done, we can just keep rotating it and moving it to another location.
Right, well, I don't think we have a speeding problem, we have a volume problem. And and I love all these signs you put on Lincoln. Um, and we took one for the street, we have a big sign in front of our house. Uh, but again, I don't think that's going to be the problem. And I think I think you even said uh that it wasn't going to deter trucks from coming down our street, these speed tables. So what are they going to do? Speeding for like a a a percent? It's not even a percent of cars that come down that speed. We just have volumes of cars, it's just lines of cars coming down. But um, that's one thing. So um, let me see what else I wanted to say. As the town.
And the traffic that goes down there, are you aware of the fact that the GPS sends the trucks down Lincoln Street?
Are you talking to me or you talking?
I was going to say, you're talking to us or you're talking to him?
We updated it.
That's been a problem.
So we've, so any trucker in the in the country is supposed to use a truck navigational system. Fortunately, they don't, they just use their cell phones and it doesn't have the rules that are associated with that, you know? So it's not built into it. Uh, we could put a sign up there and, you know, Google Maps and Waze and all that should update, but they should be utilizing the trucking GPS units and that's on the companies to do that. It's on, it's on our police force to enforce it and write the tickets. And fortunately.
But the mayor and the borough contacted Google and Google Maps, Yahoo, all the all the map companies and had it removed, I think about three years ago. Twenty twenty, yeah, I'm sorry, five years ago, yeah.
I do want to say, like I said, all those uh signs are 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 nice and I have a big giant sign in front of my house, which is fine. Uh, I feel like we need, and I've said this before, and I don't know why we're not, we didn't do it this time. We need a picture sign of a truck with a line through it on Harrison and on Eagle Rock with an arrow pointing to linking, Lincoln saying four tons underneath that because they're not seeing those signs that have the letters on it. The the trucks are turning and they're not seeing it. So if we had those big signs, I'm not saying they're going to pay attention.
It's a good suggestion.
Yeah, because they're not going to.
I'll talk to.
Yeah.
See, we can, I'll talk to John and see.
Take those letter signs out and put something else in there, you know, that lists pictures and hopefully, you know, you know, I don't know if that will help. We need to do something because all this negative talk about our street is just putting it out in the universe and I don't like it. I just don't believe speed tables are going to be the answer because we had them before. I have neighbors on our street that agree with me. Um, you know, they're not as boisterous as I am or as Elizabeth is or Jerry. But there's people out there that don't want them because they had them before. And yes, these might be a little less quieter, I think, I don't know. Because when you have eighteen wheels going around it or vans with tools in the back, it's not going to be quieter. But, you know, I I like you guys, you're doing a great job, but hear us uh because especially with the volume of cars coming down, it's going to be a problem. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Hey.
Good night.
Any other member of the public wish to be heard? Do we have a motion to close executive?
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, exactly, sorry. Get ahead of myself, sorry. We have a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Porati, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none. Next on the agenda is presentations, we have none. First on introduction of ordinances, ordinance twenty one dash twenty twenty five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for improvements to Cortlandt Street and Fourth Avenue in and by the borough of Roseland in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating four hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of one hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy six dollars bonds or notes to the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Sir, a motion to introduce ordinance twenty one dash twenty twenty five. So moved.
Second.
Uh, Bardi, Trillo? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number twenty one dash two thousand twenty five will be posted on the borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty five.
Do we want to take a second for the room to clear out? Yeah, for five. Bathroom, yeah.
Yeah, I was.
Can we uh? Can we take a motion to take a break?
Yeah, just.
Motion. Barding.
Second.
Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, hearing none, we'll be back in a few minutes. All right, we have a motion to go back to open session. So moved.
Second.
Bardi, Toly, all in favor? Aye.
Fine.
Opposed, hearing none, we're back in open session, I don't have to leave them.
No.
Okay. Next on the agenda is introduction of ordinance twenty two dash twenty twenty five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
A bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of vehicles and equipment in and by the borough of Roseland in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating two hundred and forty five thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of two hundred and thirty two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars bonds or notes to the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Sir, a motion to introduce ordinance twenty two dash twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Second. Uh, Parati, Parati, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number twenty two dash two thousand twenty five will be posted on the borough's website. Notice of a public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty five.
Next on the agenda, bless you if that was a sneeze, next on the agenda is ordinance twenty three dash twenty twenty five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the borough of Roseland in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appro appropriating two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of two hundred and forty four thousand one hundred and fifty dollar bonds or notes to the borough finance part of the cost thereof.
Sir, a motion to introduce ordinance twenty three dash twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Second.
Parati. Was brought.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number twenty three dash two thousand twenty five will be posted on the borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty five.
Thank you. Uh, ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty five was noticed mistakenly and identified by an incorrect number. Therefore, the notice of the public hearing on ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty five will be re-advertised and the hearing will be rescheduled to the July fifteenth, two thousand twenty five meeting. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty-five, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending chapter three of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Roseland entitled Police Regulations, section three dash two entitled Noise.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second. Parati, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty-five? If there are none, may we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Parati, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending chapter three of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Roseland entitled Police Regulations, section three dash two entitled Noise.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Barty, roll call vote please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroeder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toly?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance number sixteen dash two thousand twenty-five will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins, next there's an ord- a public hearing on ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-five, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending section fourteen dash four of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Roseland. Entitled Use of Outdoor Facilities to Establish Weekend Hours and Fees for the Use of the Pavilion and Picnic Area at O'Byrne Field.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty?
So moved.
Second. Toly, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-five? Hearing and seeing none, may we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Toly, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending section fourteen dash four of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Roseland entitled Use of Outdoor Facilities. To Establish Weekend Hours and Fees for the Use of Pavilion and Picnic Area at O'Byrne Field.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Toly, Brant, roll call vote please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroeder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toly?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance seventeen dash two thousand twenty-five will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins, next we have a public hearing on ordinance eighteen dash twenty twenty-five, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending chapter seven of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Roseland entitled Traffic. Amend section seven dash forty point three entitled Regulation for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic. And the Parking of Traffic on All Other Private Property.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance eighteen dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second. Brant, Barty, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance eighteen dash twenty twenty-five? Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion to close, may we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Barty, Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending chapter seven of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Roseland entitled Traffic. To amend section seven dash forty point three entitled Regulation for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on All Other Private Property.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance eighteen dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
I think it was Toly, Brant, roll call vote please, Mr. Watkins.
Who was that?
Uh, Toly, Brant.
Thank you. Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroeder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toly?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance number eighteen dash two thousand twenty-five will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins, next is a public hearing on ordinance nineteen dash twenty twenty-five, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the borough of Roseland in the county of Essex, New Jersey. Appropriating one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars therefore. And authorizing the issuance of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars bonds or notes to the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance nineteen dash twenty twenty?
So moved. Second.
Barty, Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance nineteen dash twenty twenty-five? Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Toly, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Sir Watkins, please read the ordinance by title.
Bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the borough of Roseland in the county of Essex, New Jersey. Appropriating one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and forty dollars therefore. And authorizing the issuance of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars bonds or notes to the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance nineteen dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved. Second.
Brant, Trillo, roll call vote please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroeder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toly?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance number nineteen dash two thousand twenty-five will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance. Shall take effect twenty days after the first publication after final adoption as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins, next we have ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty-five, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of an ambulance in and by the borough of Roseland in the county of Essex, New Jersey. Appropriating four hundred and eight thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. Bonds or notes to the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second. Parati, Barty, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty-five? Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of an ambulance in and by the borough of Roseland in the county of Essex, New Jersey. Appropriating four hundred and eight thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. Bonds or notes to the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Brant, roll call vote please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroeder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toly?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty dash two thousand twenty-five will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance. Shall take effect twenty days after the first publication after final adoption as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins, next on the agenda, we have resolution two-two-seven dash twenty twenty-five, approving the June eleventh bill list. Everyone receive the bill list for questions, concerns and or recusals. If there are none, take a motion to approve the bill list.
So moved.
Second.
Barty, Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Next on the agenda, we have resolutions one through fifteen by agenda night number by resolution number two-twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-five through two-forty-two dash twenty twenty-five. I'd like to move these in their entirety, if there are no, if there are any questions or concerns or recusals on the resolutions, if there are none, excuse me.
I, I have a quick question on re- number twelve, resolution two-thirty-nine. The, the woman that we're doing for HR, is she HR and payroll or just HR? Okay, she's both, okay. Does it?
Anything further? If not, we'll take a motion to approve this.
So moved. Second.
Barty, Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think I might have to recuse myself on fifteenth.
Good points.
No.
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 Oh, okay.
Okay.
Right.
So let's take a motion again, excuse me, motion to approve the resolutions?
Hold on, that, while we do this.
Wait, I'm gonna abstain from number thirteen, to submit the grant for Park Street, because.
Okay, so let's, okay, I get it, no, no, it's fine. Resolutions one through twelve by agenda item, two-twenty-eight dash two, twenty twenty-five through two-thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-five. We have a motion to approve those twelve.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Trillo, Parati, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move resolution two-forty dash twenty twenty-five with Councilwoman Parati recusing herself, do we have a motion for that resolution?
So moved. Second.
Barty, Brant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, next we'll move resolution two-forty-one dash twenty twenty-five and two-forty-two dash twenty twenty-five, fourteen and fifteen on the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Second.
So moved, second.
Toly, Toly, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, next we have the consent agenda, to waive the field permit fees for youth baseball walkout game, which ended, I think, about an hour and a half ago. Do we have a motion to waive these fees?
Please, no, dou- double them.
Schroeder, with a second?
Second.
Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Um.
Where is?
Mayor's report, I just wanna thank everyone for making the picnic wonderful, the police fire, O E M, et cetera, and I'll keep the rest brief. I have nothing else. Committee reports, Finance Administration, Councilman's party.
Thank you, Mayor, nothing to report tonight.
Recreation Councilman Trillo.
Uh, also nothing to, besides the sex, the seventh and eighth grade girls won the softball championship undefeated season. I hope that's to your liking, Mayor's back.
I was looking at, I was looking at this trophy at Noecker yesterday when I was at sixth grade graduation and we need another seventh.
I know that's where the bar was set, so they undefeated and I had Coach Williams with me as well, I know is your buddy, so uh, we got that done, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you, that's all I.
Councilman Schroeder.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Brant?
Uh, just two uh, quick announcements, um, Godfrey, Gates, Mitchell, Plymouth and Lyons, we're having our bid opening for the repaving of those streets on June twenty-fourth. And the water tank on uh, Ridge Road, um, uh, the bid opening for that is July second, that's all I have.
Thank you, Public Safety Councilman Parati?
I'm, I'm nothing at this moment.
Thank you, Councilman Toly.
Well, I guess I'm the only one, everybody stay. Just one quick thing, under the Historical Society and the Historical Preservation, this Saturday, um, from, let's see, from eleven AM to four PM over at the Becker Barn. There's going to be a little presentation about the history of the Becker Farm, there'll be refreshments and um, lots of information about, about the history. And other than that, um, nothing else.
Thank you, Councilman, anyone have anything else to add to committee reports? There are none, next, next we have the approval of minutes for our May twentieth, June third and June eleventh meetings. Everyone receive the minutes for questions, concerns or recusals, if there are none, we'll take a motion.
You weren't here.
You normally listen when you're not. I think you were here for a while.
I missed at least the special counsel.
Councilman Trillo was not at.
June eleventh?
No.